Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would like to call to order this July 10th, 2022, Meeting of the Bloomington, 2023, excuse me, Meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Thank you for everyone who's joined us here in the chambers, everybody watching online. We'll start our meeting as we always do. If you could, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome and thanks to everybody for participating this evening. First order of business tonight, council is to approve an agenda. And on our agenda, we've got a couple of introductory items. We've got an introduction of new employees. We're going to get an update on our Bloomington Forward campaign. And then a mission moment, introduction to our racial equity action teams. Consent business, Councilmember Don Lysandro has consent this evening, and we have six items on our consent business. We have one hearing this evening. It's a public hearing, item 4.1, regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 17 and Appendix A of the city code relating to right-of-way fees. Under organizational business, we have item 5.1, which is a resolution initiating rezoning of Lyndale Avenue properties from B2 to B4. For folks tuning in, item 5.2, which was an item from Continental Ballet, they were going to give us an update and talk to the council regarding a grant request. They have withdrawn that piece of business. So council, that would be one change in our agenda this evening is a withdrawal of item 5.2. And then item 5.3, we will wrap up as we do with our city council policy and issue update. Council, any questions? If not, I would move approval of the agenda as stated with the removal of item 5.2 from organizational business.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Lowman to adopt tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0, noting that Councilmember Martin is not with us this evening. I think he's under the weather this evening. We have an agenda, and we will move on to item 2.1 of that agenda. It's an introduction of new employees, and I think we have a few of them. Diane Kirby, our Community Services Director.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And City Council. I'm delighted to introduce two new members of the Community Services Department, and we'll start with the newest member of our Community Services team. Jade Burt started on June 27th as Community Health Supervisor in the Public Health Division. There she oversees the work of the Community Resource Team. Jade brings more than 10 years of experience in community health programming and direct clinical care, and is passionate about empowering others as they navigate their unique health journey. Jade holds a Master of Nursing from the University of Minnesota, as well as a Master of Education from Widener University. Jade finds this combination of nursing and education offers a holistic approach to relationship building and allows her to connect across a broad range of communities. Jade grew up in Rochester, Minnesota, in a family that benefited greatly from various public health programs. She now deeply appreciates the privilege that she has in helping others. Jade currently resides in Minneapolis and is looking forward to learning about and collaborating with our public health teams dedicated to serving the cities of Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield. Please welcome Jade Burt.
Good evening, Jade. Welcome.
Would you like to say anything? Sure. I'll just say hello and thank you so much for holding space for people to come and talk about who they are. This is my first experience working in government, so I'm coming in with fresh eyes and an eagerness to help people. So, yeah.
Well, great. We're glad to have you onboard, and yes, looking forward to your perspective with those fresh eyes that I think would be an interesting perspective to bring, especially to our Public Health Department. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. And then I'd like to introduce our next member of the team. It's a pleasure to introduce the city's new Community Outreach and Engagement Manager, Eric Holt House. Eric started his employment with the city on June 20th. He comes to us with more than 10 years of experience managing engagement programs for local government and higher education specifically around sustainability. Eric comes to us from Hennepin County, where he served as Climate Administrative Manager, leading the department's engagement team and supporting engagement and planning for urban agriculture, electric mobility, and federal funding. Previously, Eric served for seven years as Sustainability Program Manager for the city of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Born in Dixon, Illinois, Eric holds a master's degree in urban and regional planning from the University of Illinois in Urbana-Champaign, and he is currently working on a second master's degree in public administration from Arkansas State University. In his free time, Eric participates in a soccer league that plays in Bloomington and other parts of the metro area, and he's also an expert berry forager. He has been training us on the berries that can be found right here on the grounds of Civic Plaza. Please welcome Eric Holt House.
Good evening, Eric. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Diane. A pleasure to meet you, council and mayor. It's a privilege to be here. Just got started, really looking forward to serving the Bloomington community. It's been a very welcoming and positive experience so far here with the city organization, serving a very talented and passionate team in our division, in our department, and across the city, and relatively new to the Twin Cities area. And so we'll gladly share where the berry bushes are and what's edible. You saw me giving them a glance as you came in. There are still some ripe, there are service berries, and they line the parking lot. There's about 40 of those bushes, and I've been harvesting them freely, but we'll also freely share. So it's a pleasure to be here, and I've worked a long time as a sustainability practitioner, and I would say with that, that engagement has always been the key to sustainability success, and engagement is the key to, I think, anything else that a community would hope to unlock. And so it's a privilege to be here, be serving the community, and I look forward to working with you all and perhaps hearing more about the Twin Cities and great places to go in Bloomington. Still relatively fresh here, so learning a lot and meeting a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, and I can personally attest to Eric's engagement abilities because he stopped me on the way in as I walked into the building this evening and said hello. So, well done with that. So Eric and Jade, welcome aboard. Thank you so very much for being here this evening, and look forward to having you out and about in the community and meeting the residents of this community, as well as all your coworkers here at City Hall. So, welcome. Thanks. Do we have others?
That's it?
Oh, that's it. Very good. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. But now I know why you were standing up, because you're next on the agenda as well. That's right.
Exactly right.
Item 2.2 is an update on our Bloomington Forward program. Ms. Kirby, welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This fall, Bloomington voters will consider a half-cent local option sales tax to fund $155 million in capital amenity improvements. This investment plan, called Bloomington Forward, includes construction of a community health and wellness center, renovation of the Bloomington Ice Garden, and restoration of the Nine Mile Creek Corridor. The city of Bloomington has partnered with Rapp Strategies, Inc. to assist with communication of the Bloomington Forward Initiative. CEO Todd Rapp and Managing Director Todd Stone are here tonight to present an overview of the activities already underway to build public awareness about the Bloomington Forward Initiative. Please welcome Todd and Todd.
Thank you.
Mr. Rapp, Mr. Stone, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here.
Thank you for being here.
Nice to see you all, councilmembers and staff. I'm Todd Rapp. I'm the CEO of Rapp Strategies. I'm going to take just a moment and talk a little bit about why it is we're so interested in public referenda, local units of government. And I'm going to turn it over to Todd Stone, who's really doing the work as he's the project manager for this project. You know, we've been very fortunate that our firm, over the years, has been able to work on a variety of public issues, really interesting ones, intense public issues, and then somehow we've developed this real attraction to working with local units of government and helping them when they're putting forth a referendum for the public to decide. We've worked on 87 of these before today, and large and small. I'm currently working with a very small school district, which has exactly 570 voters. Think for a second, councilmembers, what that would be like, to only have that number of people that you needed to contact and respond to. What we appreciate about this is that local units of government need to provide the public information that's necessary for voters to make the best decision. State law has determined that you must put the sales tax in front of voters. The voters get an opportunity to set policy by doing this, and so it becomes incumbent and truly an ethical responsibility for the local unit of government to communicate effectively. We ask that you think about this, not as some people would call it, it's public relations or marketing. Actually, it's not. What it is, is it's about public outreach and community engagement. How do you get a conversation going with your community? So members can be as intelligent as they choose to be and hopefully very well informed about the ballot questions, but equally as important that you are responding to the questions that they have in a timely manner. By doing that, it often builds a level of trust that you're not going to find on very many policy issues. We think that the commitment that the city makes towards this outreach and engagement strategy is directly related to their success in building public confidence in these decisions. One thing I do want to point out for you is that state law is very clear about the limits of the communication that the city can pay for. And on the right side of this slide, we've showed how we've broken those areas down into really nine key things that the city can communicate. And when you look at the website, you'll see many of these pop out for you. These are the areas that if you communicate these well, you've done your job, and you're going to have a more informed residents. So with that, I'll turn it over to Todd. He can talk about the action plan.
Thank you. Good evening, council. We've been working with city staff really since March, building out our strategic plan, our communications work plan, and various communication materials, leading up to the debut of the referendum microsite, bloomingtonforward.org, which debuted on June 16th. As part of our work, we have put together, we've worked, assembled a communications calendar through Election Day to guide our communications work, our material development. We developed a core messaging document that we use to provide the consistent language and clarity that we want to have with all our communications throughout the election season. We developed the Bloomington Forward logo, working with city staff, and as I said, launched that microsite. Over the past week, I've had the chance to participate in two training sessions with city employees at the Bloomington Ice Garden, as well as Creekside Community Center. And we talked about how employees who are working, who are engaging residents every day can serve as information ambassadors. As Todd described, we want to be information-focused in all the work we do in our communications and our community outreach, and there's no better way to reach more residents with good information than the employees who are out there every day talking to your constituents. So that was a really fun process, and we're going to continue those conversations in the days and weeks ahead. We're working on other communications materials currently, including a PowerPoint that's going to be available for city staff and city leaders to use when there are opportunities to engage different civic groups or different community groups or neighborhood groups about the referendum and the projects it supports. We'll be developing other communications materials with city staff that, including public signs for buildings and things like that, again, directing residents to where they can get additional information. The city staff has already done a great job developing several informational videos about the projects and the needs that they'll address, and we're talking about some other ideas on video moving forward. Really, taking a step back, big picture, what we're trying to do is start building up, accelerating our information and outreach activities in the days and weeks ahead, leading up to early voting. Just a few things about the Bloomington Forward microsite. Again, it debuted just a little over three weeks ago. As Todd described, those nine areas of focus in terms of information we want to provide residents, you'll see that broken out on the website. Everything from explaining the challenges, the plan, the cost, that's important too, and the tax impact, as well as voting information and resources, different background materials that will help guide residents in getting their questions answered. We're going to have a, we already have a frequently asked questions module set up for residents to dive deeper into the details. We're going to keep updating that. If we continue to get questions from residents from different places, and we get those questions answered, we'll take those questions and answers and then put them on the microsite too, so we can continue to share that information more broadly. The website's very smartphone-friendly. That's important, because as we continue to develop more communications materials, a lot of those are going to feature QR codes, where you can just, you know, point your smartphone right to it, click, and then you're directed directly to the microsite to get your questions answered. In those three weeks, we have already attracted more than 1,150 unique visitors, and we're approaching 3,000 page views. We love to see a lot of page views, more than the number of unique visitors. We like that ratio to be around two and a half to three times per visit. We're seeing that so far. That tells us that residents are taking the time to not just look at one page, but they're clicking around, they're exploring the website a little bit, hopefully getting the information they need. The last thing I'll just point out is so far, you'll see that 58% of the searches are coming from desktops. We think that ratio is going to change over time, and people will start gravitating to their smartphone as the primary device to use the microsite, in part because we're going to be having a lot more communications materials directing them there. Just walking through just a few areas of how we're trying to frame messaging that's focused on answering questions. Most fundamental question, why now? Why are we being asked to consider this proposal and these projects now? Just some of the points of emphasis. Bloomington had quite a growth spurt between 2010 and 2020, and such services and amenities that residents need are growing and evolving. The public health building and Creekside Community Center are both over 60 years old and can no longer accommodate the current level of programming and service demands that residents have. The Ice Garden needs critical infrastructure work, including modernized refrigeration systems. And the Nine Mile Creek Corridor, which is a great access to nature right here in our own backyard, requires rehabilitation of riverbanks and natural habitat protections. Also want to talk about how the projects address residents' needs. Todd mentioned at the beginning, vision for the future, what's motivating work like this, planning like this that leads to project proposals such as this. We're talking about offering a wider range of amenities and services for all residents of all ages, cultures, and economic statuses. That's why this investment plan has been put forward, and with a focus on three primary projects. As you know, of course, the new Community Health and Wellness Center, Bloomington Ice Garden, and the Creek Corridor. When we talk about the plan and its benefits, we also need to talk about the legislature's role, as well as the tax impact. We want to explain that the legislature first played an important role in this process, reviewing the projects that are proposed by the city and determining whether that met their definition of regional impact, before they would authorize and allow the city to move forward with a half percent sales tax option on this November's ballot. Referring to the tax impact itself, if we're going to describe the benefits, we need to talk about the costs, and we want to come up with different ways to describe the tax impact that residents can easily understand. And you can see the different ways in which we're framing the tax impact, so residents consider that value-based proposition when they go to vote. Among other common questions that we will see and already are getting, why a sales tax? And we'll have various messaging that explains why a sales tax was the preferred option over other considerations, sharing the costs among residents and non-residents for these investments. We'll explain how the University of Minnesota's independent study that predicted, that demonstrated that 60% of the sales tax would be collected from non-residents who purchase goods and services in the city. And most importantly, we want to make sure people have the information they need to vote, to participate in this important community decision. So we have basic information up now about election dates, but we're going to have, we're going to continue to update the microsite and other communications materials, so residents know where to vote, how to register, if they want to vote early, what their options are, if they want to wait till Election Day, and we'll make sure they have good information on where they go to vote on November 7th. Sorry, the clicker suddenly is not working. Well, there was just one slide left, and basically the focus of that slide was this. We're going to continue to move forward to make sure we have a dynamic, updated microsite that provides all the information that residents need as best we can. We'll have, we're going to be exploring and identifying new opportunities to put city staff in front of residents at different community events and among civic groups. We'll be trying to make sure we position all our communications materials to address questions residents have. One of the things Diane and I have talked about is making sure that we adhere to what we call a 24-hour rule, making sure if we get a question from residents, that we get them a response within 24 hours. Try to answer their questions. At the very least, tell them that we're working on it, and we'll get them a response as soon as possible. So I'll stop there. Thank you. And if you have any questions for us, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Thanks for the presentation. I guess the question that jumps to my mind is impressive-looking as you've been talking. I got to the website and looked through it and very impressed with it. Are there other plans for additional social media outlets? Because we know that a website is wonderful, but there are a lot of different ways that people get their information now.
Yeah, one of the things we're doing, and actually, we talked about that earlier this afternoon with Diane and her team, we're going to use all the city's social media platforms to promote the microsite itself, to direct people to go there as a key information source. Also, as we develop more materials, like new videos, and you'll see some videos already being promoted, as you see more of those videos get shared, we're also going to continue to direct people back to bloomingtonforward.org.
Council questions, Mr. Stone, Mr. Rapp? Councilmember Lowman?
Just more of a statement. I had some questions for you, but I looked on the website, and there it was. There was the answer.
Wow. Impressive.
Thank you.
Council, anything? I do want to clarify, and you said it, but I want to make sure that we say this clearly as possible. The information the city is able to provide on this is information.
Yes.
It is not advocacy.
Absolutely. And that's one of the things we talked with all the city employees about during our training sessions, was that when you're on the clock, and you are talking on behalf of the city by providing information only, not to use any city resources for advocacy of any kind, once you're off the clock and on your own time, you're welcome to participate in any kind of advocacy you want.
And I appreciate that distinction, and I appreciate you talking with the folks who are going to be working on this, to make sure that that stays very, very specific and very clear, because, yes, this is an information effort, this is not an advocacy effort.
Absolutely.
By law.
By law.
Yes. Well, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rapp, thank you. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
Yes. We will move on to item 2.3 on our agenda, which is one of our mission moments. We have them every now and again. Some of them recur annually, and this is one of our annually recurring mission moments. This is an introduction to our racial equity action team. And Faith Jackson is here with us this evening.
And look at that, the presentation.
Just like that.
Just like that. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community, both the folks in the audience and those who are tuning in online. Faith Jackson here, Chief Equity Inclusion Officer for the city of Bloomington. And tonight, I have the pleasure with you to present this presentation, which is the series, the first in a series of presentations that provide an update on the work of the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. So, oh, look at that. Thank you. Consistent with the city's mission to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community, a place where people want to be, our office envisions a vibrant, safe, and healthy place for all people in our community. And so we do that by embedding the work of equity, inclusion, and belonging, those principles, in both our internal and external work. So here on the screen, you see some of the ways that we do that. I won't go through and list them all, but I thought it would be important just to provide a reminder for how we do that work. So we provide departments, we'll staff support in both learning and training opportunities. We implement racial equity frameworks and plans. We create tools and private sort of resources, and our thought partners with both folks in the internal organization, and also we partner with community to do disparity reduction work. One of the other things that our office is charged with doing is measuring the impact of the city's equity and inclusion work and reporting on progress, hence the reason why we're here today for the annual update. So the work that we engage in, clicker's moving a little faster than I wanted it to do, as I mentioned before, is both internal and external, and is made possible by so many people, more people than we can mention here today. But over, throughout this series of presentations, we're going to highlight three key groups. We're going to talk about our internal work, which is guided by the Racial Equity Business Plan, and supported by our Racial Equity Action Teams and our Employee Resource Groups. And then we're also going to talk about the work of the Racial Equity Strategic Plan and our disparity reduction work, which is guided by the Racial Equity Strategic Plan and supported by both community partners and residents. And so although there's many people who make this work possible, we're going to focus in on those groups over the course of the next several weeks. So tonight, you're going to hear from our Racial Equity Action Teams. On July 24th, you're going to hear from myself and Padal Yang, and we're going to provide a comprehensive overview of the work that we've been doing in the office. And then on August 14th, you're going to hear from the Employee Resource Groups, and these presentations will make up that sort of comprehensive update on the work that we're doing. And so with that, I am going to invite Padal Yang here, the Equity Inclusion Program Specialist for the city, to the podium, and she's going to introduce the work of the Racial Equity Action Teams. And so with that, Padal, come on up, and we'll get started. Oh, one other note. Typically, in the past, we've had the REIT sort of like go through their presentation, and we ask that you hold questions to the end. Don't worry about doing that this year. Feel free to sort of ask questions as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight. Again, as Faith mentioned, my first name is Padal, last name is Yang, and I'm the Equity Inclusion Program Specialist for our Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. And so thank you, Faith, for having me come up here to support our Racial Equity Action Teams update. And so just to give an overview of our Racial Equity Action Team, or what we also call them is REIT. As a, just a refresher, REITs were created back in 2020, and the sole purpose is to continue to support the city of Bloomington's mission to advance racial equity. And our REITs do this by continuing to uplift the mission within their departments by supporting development and implementation of the department's annual racial equity work plan and promoting the development and respect, and creating a respectful and inclusive culture within their departments. Within the role of each action team, they create an increase of staff awareness of the city's commitment to advance racial equity. They also identify opportunities to advance racial equity in the department's programs, policies, and practices, because they are the key experts within each of those areas, and they know where the gaps may be. They support development and implementation, again, within their department through their annual racial equity work plan and specific key items on which the action teams will be responsible for. And then they also serve as a sounding board for racial equity-related workplace issues within the department as well. And so as Faith mentioned, tonight, we're going to have key staff from each of the Racial Equity Action Teams within their departments come up and present about who they are and key highlights. And then there are some Racial Equity Action Team champions who weren't able to make it tonight, and so I'll be presenting on behalf of them as well. And with that, we have our really first one to come up here to present about our Administration Racial Equity Action Team.
Yeah, Mayor and City Council, it's nice to address you from this side of the podium for once. So I'll be speaking briefly about the work of the Administration Racial Equity Team, or A TREAT, as we branded ourselves. It was such a treat to get together with this list of fine folks that you see up there from the city manager's office, city clerk, human resources, and the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. So our fearless leader, Assistant City Manager Mike Sable, we were charged to come together, assemble as a group, create something in a short period of time, and then disband, which was kind of a new concept for some of us. We said, wait, we're not going to keep meeting, keep working on these things? No. He said, we're going to make, we're going to, we started meeting early 2022, and we're charged with, within a year or so, we're going to put out a couple of policies or products and put those into effect. So our group circled around two efforts, Community Involvement Time Policy, which I'll come back to a little bit more, and Enhanced Translation Services, primarily centered around, let me stay here, primarily centered around improving customer service at the city clerk's counter to enhance, basically to enhance the translation services that could be provided to residents and customers there. So on that effort, we've begun using Propio One app, which allows for, it began in the city clerk's office, but also the police department is going to help pilot this live video translation service, which just really steps up, you know, the ability to serve our customers and residents in that way that need live translation, whether they're filling out a passport app, speaking with an officer, and so forth. Another effort that our team put together was the Community Involvement Time Policy. in that way that need live translation, whether they're filling out a passport app, speaking with an officer, and so forth. Another effort that our team put together was the community involvement time policy. It's a little bit of a wonky name, but basically, what that is, it allows, it allows, or it creates for community engagement opportunities for city employees that benefit the community as a whole. So, that can mean a lot of different things, but basically, full-time employees can flex up to eight hours of their, of their paid time per year, giving that time to, giving their time up to organizations such as FEEP, Loaves &amp; Fishes, Bridging, Oasis, and, and many, many more. The list of eligible organizations is, is always growing. And then, and actually, our group piloted that effort by going out and putting in some time at Loaves &amp; Fishes last summer, which was a wonderful experience. And then, lastly, I did want to touch on the, the paid parental leave policy, since it is on the screen there. That effort was actually put forth by the Women's Employee Resource Group. So, we're going to, that, that policy is in effect now, but you'll hear more about that in August, as Faith mentioned, when the Employee Resource Groups come back to give their full presentation. With that, I will turn it over to community development.
Mayor members of the council, Nick Johnson in the Planning Division, but more importantly, the Community Development Department. We're CD REIT. We are many, as you can see. One of our strengths is that we have over 20 active members in our REIT, and that spans all of the divisions within community development. So, one of the, the greatest points, in my opinion, about implementation of the REITs over the last couple of years, is it's really created a forum for employees across divisions to collaborate in a whole new way. And so, I think with some of the projects we presented to you last year, and I'll be presenting to you here this year, it really is that opportunity for people to have a conversation that otherwise wouldn't be working together in their normal day-to-day activities. We do have cool t-shirts, I should mention too, they say "Heartbeat of the City." I realized that I wore mine the other day, and it was in the Dirty Clothes hamper. So, that was not good planning by your senior planner in this instance. So, the way that CD REIT kind of approaches our activities is we blend half of our activities to be more educational. So, we'll watch some educational films, or we'll have discussions about various, either news events or activities happening within our community, and how they relate to community development work. And the other half is we really focus on subgroup projects. So, last year, we were working on the SAC deferment and SAC credit policy. We were piloting the racial equity impact analysis as part of our, that sometimes you see in your packets for decision-making. We were working on a number of different projects. And then, this year, the, the subprojects that we've been focused on since we last spoke to you, and I would say that not all of these projects are CD REIT projects, but there is usually CD REIT fingerprints on them some way or another. So, not only does it allow people in different divisions to kind of cross-collaborate and cross-pollinate, but it also gives project managers a good roster of people who are motivated and excited to do work, kind of furthering these different areas. So, Bloom and Bloomington workforce development, that's in the implementation stage. Twelve Bloom interns were placed in its first year, which exceeded, I think, a lot of people's expectations in terms of the number of, of youth involved. So, that's great. Second, second one, also related to youth in Bloomington. So, the, a number of CD REIT members have been giving presentations at, at local schools about jobs or career paths in local government, specifically, community development. Those are job types that are now, a lot of youth and other people are kind of aware of when you're at that age. So, those have been really successful, and been a lot of fun for the staff who've been able to do that. The Small Business Center, something that came out of RESC, and other staff have been working on that. They're moving ahead at a really good pace, and staff in our port and throughout community development are working on that. I think they're at 60% plans and hoping to get it in construction next year, I believe. This fall, I'm sorry, this winter. So, that's pretty exciting in terms of the conversion of Fire Station 3. Community development staff working on a business retention policy. So, sometimes businesses, through redevelopment efforts, either lose their space or need to move, and coming up with different tools or levers to help them stay in Bloomington is kind of the thought process behind that one. And then, finally, a facade improvement program. Certainly, our commercial nodes around Bloomington is, is always an ongoing discussion and topic in terms of how to keep those fresh and vital. And so, hopefully, that program will also aid in, in those efforts. So, with that, that's happy to take any questions. But, and Padal is great, by the way, at supporting REITs. Faith is excellent, too. But Padal always answers our questions lickety-split, so. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and council. For the finance REIT team, it's made up of myself, Jan Oomquist, Dana Chow. Sue Legrand is their current chair, and Lizzie Rio Balbueno is our current project manager.
Do you have t-shirts?
No, we don't have t-shirts.
Just wondering, just wondering.
An item that came before the council later this, or late spring, was on the tree assessment piece. And so, we have a number of assessments that are starting the process, and you will see them this fall for those that are taking advantage of that. And so, part of the council had asked for updates on that. So, every fall, when we bring the tree assessment information to you, we'll be giving you that update of where we're at on tree assessments and the impact on that. Also, this spring, the city council approved adding two BIPOC banks to our list for certi, certificates of deposits. We haven't been able to fully utilize those, because when we take banks and put CDs into place, we have to do that by competitive bid. So, we're waiting and watching rates at these banks. So, hopefully, in the near future, they will have the most competitive prices for us. And then, we've launched our new phase of the vendor diversity program. So, with that, finance is going to be the pilot, and we're looking at all the contracts we have, and then seeing which one of those can be turned over into POs, so that we can start tracking the purchase orders in our system to see which ones and where they're at. So, once we get a clear line of what the issues are with POs and managing those, then we can move that out to other departments to make sure that we can keep stepping up our vendor diversity program. And then, next week, Leah and myself will be heading to Boston for our municipal bond and racial equity gathering, and looking to see how we can enhance our bond documents for racial equity issues. So, there's those pieces. One of the other areas that we're working on, we've been, for the last seven months, doing it around the world. As in Bloomington, or in finance, we do a Monday huddle. And this morning, we did the continent of Europe, and we've done different continents, and all the staff have signed up for them. And we talk about what's going on in that continent, and just learn more about the world. So, just different things that we've been doing in finance. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, I'm trusting if anybody has questions, do not be shy, okay? Thank you.
Councilmembers, manager, I'm Leah Hughes. I will be giving the Parks and Recreation REIT update. Who we are, it's a combination of Ann Catry, myself, Jill Murphy, Jean Sanon, and Jenna Smith. Is there a trick to this? Ooh, there we go. All right. And here are our accomplishments over the next two slides. So, mobile recreation, wait, this went too far. I apologize. All right. Our mobile recreation is free programming with no registration required. It is a mobile program that rotates to a variety of different parks every Tuesday afternoon, and it will go for the months of June and July. This provides access to a lot of different recreation activities, access to education on different sports and recreation things for youth, and it moves around, so it's accessible and not just held in, in one area. We are also implementing an Adopt a Park program, which is opening up this month. This is also open to anyone. Anyone can apply. It can be individuals, groups. And basically, it's an application to dedicate one to two days per month for your, your household or your group to just maintain the park that you love. So, it's in combination and collaboration with the park maintenance team and Parks and Recreation. Services include just community cleanups, litter pickups, beautification projects, and invasive species removals. There are opportunities within this program for more involved projects and programs that are in true collaboration or more collaboration with the park maintenance teams. And those will be kind of accepted and discussed on a rotating basis as they come in. Creekside and a number of our facilities that rent spaces are seeing a lot of diversification in the community members and organizations that are utilizing our facilities. One highlight is Creekside is seeing an increase in culturally-specific rentals. Things such as concierres, Ramadan celebrations, and city-sponsored events are being held in these rental spaces for the community and through the community partners that we now have. A new lottery registration system was implemented this year for our Summer Parks program. This was meant to increase equity and registration process by not limiting registrations to a daytime hour. Often, as a parent who has to register my child for something, it's a 5:00 AM quick start, and it's like getting concert tickets, it's full by 7:00 AM. So, we tried to take that out of the equation and make it more accessible, so people can register for these programs over a number of a weeks. And then, it's a random draw through the rec check registration program that set people to the different parks that they apply to. We've also established the Dakota Advisory Group. This is a partnership between Dakota People, the City of Bloomington, Bloomington Historical Society, and the Pond Dakota Heritage Society. They meet regularly to discuss different opportunities for education and events in the community, and try to coordinate as best they can together for penthouse activities and activities in other places throughout the city. We're also seeing an increase in BIPOC women-owned and LGBTQIA+ art partnerships here at the Art Center. Some highlights are Thread Dance, Eleva Performing Arts, Rhythm Street Movement, Alternative Motion Project, Ballroom and Latin Dance, Concerto Dance, and a continued partnership with Chadwick Nows Phillips and the Avant Guard for some of our arts and parks programming that many of us have been fortunate to witness. We've also been working on translating documents through the Language Access Program. Padal, I will admit, she is fantastic. She has done a number of trainings for the Parks and Rec team to ensure that our info desks and the people who are forward-facing with the community can provide the language services that are necessary, so people can understand what the opportunities are and how they and their families can become involved. We've also added demographic questions to our online registration software that allows us to collect information on participants, so we have a better understanding of who's showing up, how often they're showing up, but more importantly, who we're not reaching. So, that way, we can try to fill those gaps through our various partnerships, collaborations, and try to make sure that we keep moving the work forward. And lastly, we've expanded our outreach partners for both Kennedy and Jefferson High School, to try to make sure that youth know what employment opportunities are within the City of Bloomington, specifically Parks and Recreation. And we are making more trips to some of the elementary schools to, again, help parents and families in Bloomington public schools understand what some of the, the programs are accessible to their kids and their families throughout the community as well. As far as the, the Parks and Rec REIT, we meet monthly. Our conversations are varied. Sometimes, they revolve around articles or happenings in the news. Sometimes, people bring forth things that they've, they've discussed or seen within the community. And so, just try to change it up every month, in addition to using a lot of the, I mean, Parks and Rec has a lot of forward-facing people that are in the community. So, some of the things that we're seeing and hearing and doing within the community kind of drive a lot of the conversations we have. So, that's it for Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Hey, Leah.
Hi.
Yeah, thanks for, this is great. I had one quick question, if you go to the slide prior. You mentioned that you're seeing an increase in the diversity of room rentals and things of that nature. Do you have the ability to attribute it to something in particular? You know, is it the outreach that you're doing that includes making people aware of those things? Or is it because they can now read about it in their own language? Or is it some combination? How are you tracking, you know, what it is that's working when you're trying to look at what, what's happening there?
Councilmember DeLisandro, thank you for the question. I think it's all of the above. So, I think it's the extended efforts that we're making. I think it's the Language Access Program that we have. And I also think it's word of mouth. When people have a great experience in a facility with a great staff who has accommodated their needs and made their event as fun as, as it can possibly be, I think that speaks volumes. And so, I think we're seeing a lot of individuals in the community being more aware because of the efforts through marketing and language access, but also through, through their friends and neighbors, who are talking about the experiences that they had in our facilities and in our parks.
Great. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a very quick question, or just thank you for the Adopt a Park program, because I know there's a ton of people within our community that want to help out in their parks. And if you haven't seen it, I believe it was on Nextdoor, there was a thread about helping out at the dog, off-leash dog park. Don't want to get that wrong. So, so, and if you haven't, there's people interested in that, and, and I assume that there may be some opportunities for them to help out there as well. And they were looking to do exactly that. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Nelson and everyone else, if you, if you direct them to Parks and Rec, we can absolutely set them up with the, the documents and the information. But we're, we have kind of the frequent flyers and people who return year after year after year. But we have 97 parks. And clearly, one of them is needing some tender loving care at the dog park. So, just please send them to Parks and Recreation. All the information is on our website and accessible. We do have a volunteer coordinator that helps place them in the parks that they are looking to work within, and help them find projects that they can do as either a group, or, like I said, a neighborhood, or whatever their combination might be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Scott Anderson from Utilities, Public Works, REIT, consists of and has had representation from Maintenance, Utilities, Engineering, and Administration since its inception. We meet generally monthly in most instances, and have been working on, both in 2022 and 23, work plans for initiatives, both internal to the organization and external. And I'll talk about a couple of those, or a number of those next. The work plan focuses on three main areas, recruitment, and retention, and hiring of staff, current staff competency, inequity development, and addressing inequities revolving around infrastructure and service delivery. So, with regard to recruitment and hiring of staff, we've, we've implemented and expanded recruiting efforts for seasonal employees and internships, as well as professional-level recruitment, recruitment, and have implemented kind of an apprentice or a pathways program in Utilities, where we've been able to draw a much wider candidate pool and, and connect them with St. Paul Technical College, which, which luckily for us, has a, has a utility-focused program, a year-long program that, that sets applicants up ready to, to test and successfully pass state examinations to become licensed utility operators. In the staff equity and development areas, we've got current, current efforts revolving our Equity Information Lending Library. That's, that's a library of resources available for employees to, to check out, as well as our monthly experiencing equity communications, that are email communications sent out to staff to, to be consumed at their pace, on their time, just to learn more about equity-related topics. And then, soon to come, we're looking to implement shorter toolbox talks at the crew level, as well as a little more formal luncheon learns. And then, regarding infrastructure and service inequities, we've been looking at utility rate equity and affordability, affordability issues, working with the U.S. Water Alliance and, and other cities on, on collaborating and sharing tho, efforts in, in those areas, as well, as well as our own. Working on a Water Equity Opportunities Brief that we hope to have ready soon, as well as public engagement events surrounding infrastructure improvements, predominantly out of engineering, going to, going out to the community, as opposed to hosting a meeting at Public Works, going out to the different communities, and, and trying to meet folks in place and on site. So, those are handful of, of the initiatives of the Public Works REIT for 2022 and 2023.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Quick question for you, sorry. Hi. Did, I know that one of the things we've been talking about for a little bit within the utility billing framework is the, the question about whether, whether or not we, whether or not we have, whether or not our garbage, our garbage units can go to every other week, whether or not our utility billing, like we could do some kind of a roundup service that allows people to help other members, you know, pay off their, their bills or whatever. I know we have a lot of people in delinquency pay off their bills or whatever. I know we have a lot of people in delinquency right now. Are all of those things, the kinds of things that you're looking at under that topic area? I'm just kind of curious if there's, if something specific was there or any of those types of things were part of that. Thanks.
I can take a stab at that and Carl might want to jump in, but I know with regard to solid waste, there's a solid waste rate study that's intended to be undertaken. So to the degree that that also explores different service delivery methods that may or may not be a part of that. I assume it certainly could easily be if it's not already as well as we're looking at updating our cost of service model for the water utility as well. So trying to look at all those avenues. Thank you.
Awesome. This next piece, I'm really excited to announce that we have an official FIRE REIT, Fire Racial Equity Action Team. Yay! And so now we can officially say we have 10 departments that are REITs. And with that, we wanted to introduce Leon Chambers III to just come up and talk a little bit about himself and the excitement for the FIRE REIT and what he envisions.
Good evening, council. My name is Leon Chambers. We met a few months ago. I am extremely grateful to be here. I'm extremely excited to be a part of this REIT. I wanted to talk about how it was formed. After Faith gave her presentation, we were so fired up about this. No pun intended. We were extremely excited about this opportunity because we want to make sure that the fire department is a all-inclusive environment and hopefully our actions can help improve policy that will make it welcoming to others. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Leon, and we look forward to what FIRE REIT is going to do this year. So I think with that, we have several key REIT departments that I'm going to help talk on behalf. So we'll move over to our Police REIT. And this is the makeup of our Police REIT, a really diverse, robust group that supports all the efforts of racial equity inclusion. And before I kind of get into this coaching piece, when I was talking to Desmond Daniels, who is the REIT Chair, he wanted me to highlight a couple of community efforts too where they have been in support of the Juneteenth, our first inaugural Bloomington Juneteenth that just passed, and supporting with providing ice creams to family and friends and residents and community members out at Kennedy High School, in addition to having yard games, displays, and support, and just being in the community, building relationships and connections. So that was really fun and thrilling. In addition, they've also been going to give presentations and tabling at Kennedy High School to talk about who is the Bloomington Police Department and what do they do and how do they engage with community. On top of that, too, talking about career opportunities and pathways to be within a police department at the City of Bloomington. So those are some of the fun community experts or community engagement they've been doing. And to this slide here about coaching, they wanted to continue to embed and build that connections and relationships within the community. And so with the support of several key police officers, they were able to enact on some coaching the last year and this current year. So this current year, they were able to get support from Detective Degouy to help with the Bloomington Ice Garden Skate School that were held two classes weekly from November to January. So that was really exciting. So you can see some photos here of that support with the Bloomington Ice Garden Skate School. And then currently, there are fire officers coaching softball. And there's a big reveal tomorrow that Desmond told me about where, again, through the coaching process, they're not in uniform. But then at the last day of that coaching day, they show up in uniform just to be prideful in how they continue to connect and be of service to the community. And so that's going to happen tomorrow and that's going to be really exciting to see. And then some other additional exciting things that the Police Racial Equity Action Team is rolling out fairly quickly here. You can see here they have on July 20th for internal connections and community building with key staff and city employees. They're having a battle of the egg rolls. So they're going to have this held at Civic Plaza in the lunchroom here. And you get a sample-free egg rolls. They're sponsoring that from various restaurants. And you get a mark and choose which egg roll you like best from which restaurant. And in addition to that, again, with engaging with an internal staff, they're going to also offer police department tours as well. So within our city employees, they can get a better understanding of, again, who the police department is and where you can go see the spaces and what that looks like. Additionally, another event on an external level, they're going to have a summer cookout. So they started the first summer cookout last year and it was very successful at Bloomington Blooming Meadows. And so they wanted to do it again this year. So that's going to be held on July 27th. And they are partnering with Hometown Church, who is going to sponsor the free food and burgers and hot dogs and beverages, snacks with the community at Blooming Meadows. And so that's really exciting because they also get key city divisions and departments to also be there to table, talk about the city services, resources, and what's there to offer from the city. And so that was really exciting as well. So those are some key updates from Police REIT. I was going to say, Chief Hodges, you got anything to share? Okay. Next here, I want to highlight our Community Services Racial Equity Action Team. And this is the makeup of the group. We have Diane, Emily, Dan, Afav, and Tracy. And some of the work that they've been working on here, the next slide here, is the Public Health Mobile Health Hub. So this is something newly launched this year where the Public Health Division wanted to ensure that they are continuing to serve Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield, meaning community where they are at. And so the hub features immunization screenings, work appointments, and much more. And it's very colorful. They have fun toys and activities within the mobile hub. And guess what? It has air conditioning. So that's also really exciting for our community members to also be in the mobile hub to just learn and get those healthy screenings going as well. Community Services REIT also last year supported within the Bloomington Pride Celebration. They had a little over 3,000 attendees. This year, they are partnering with the, this year, the Bloomington Pride Celebration is being partnered through Twin Cities Pride, who is the nonprofit that organizes Twin Cities Pride at Loring Park. And so with this new partnership, it would ensure the support to grow the Bloomington Festival in the years to come. And this year's Pride is going to be held on Sunday, September 10th, from 12:00 to 2:00 at Bloomington Civic Plaza. Additionally, the Language Access Plan, they continue to support that effort in providing training and providing meaningful access so that our limited English proficiency individuals and community members can get access to city services, resources within the language of their spoken and/or written language. And then this was mentioned earlier already through our H-REIT or Administration Racial Equity Action Team, but Community Services REIT was also in collaboration and support of the community involvement time of ensuring that our city employees can continue to volunteer their time and be in community and build connections and bring that service as well. Next here, we have our Information Technology Racial Equity Action Teams. And who they are, they have Amy Cheney, Mario, Liz, Kyle, Greg, and Bob, a part of that group. And some key efforts that they worked on is to continue to enhance the work culture by discussing the importance of equity and inclusion in the workplace. Some example, they've done that this year is having Tamale's Day where within their division, they were able to have Tamale Days to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. In addition to, they've had topic conversations regarding racial equity and inclusion within each of their division teams and also highlighting key heritage months conversations and engaging in dialogue about key champions within each of those heritage months. In addition to that, too, this year I found out that they all have been collectively reading a book together and reading various chapters on racial equity issues and having dialogue and conversations more deeply about what that means and what that looks like. The second piece is that they continue to assist and develop cross-departmental REIT initiatives that reach the community at large. So as an internal-facing department, they really help and support all the departments within the organization and what are their initiatives and what are the key work plans that they have. And so they do a lot of support in that area as well. You want to do this, Melissa? Oh, wait, let me go back. Okay.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
I had one question about the Information Technology one, if I can. Padaw, I apologize for putting you on the spot. You don't have to answer it if you can't. I was just kind of curious. I know we talk about these as racial equity action teams. There's a lot of intersectionality associated with those. Specifically, when I think about IT, I think about things like accessibility of our digital platforms and that kind of thing. Do you know if there's any kind of areas of focus there that they're considering, knowing that IT is a bigger player in that space, at least for our digital properties?
Yeah, I know that there are some small increments of projects that they are supporting within each department and what are the key goals they have for how they want that accessibility to look like? I just don't know the exact details, but there are small pockets within different departments that they're supporting that effort in.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Sorry. Sorry to interrupt.
Melissa, the floor is yours.
All right. Mayor members, the legal REIT is comprised of these four members right now. We had, we used to have a couple more, but they have moved on to other positions and other places. So we are always accepting applications and we are excited about some of our newest additions as well. Next slide. So we have these two updates and I also have a Just Deeds update. The Restorative Court, if you recall, this is a shared project with Hennepin County. It's technically a Hennepin County employee and then the city has a match to assist with the payment of staff services. So we currently have one social worker assigned to our restorative court that we stood up. Each city has its own type of restorative court. We have one that is tailored to the types and distribution of crimes that occur in Bloomington. And we were recently notified, coming to a budget memo near you, that we have reached our capacity at the restorative court and have been, Hennepin County has indicated to us that they would like to have another person assigned. And so I encourage them to reach out to their folks in Hennepin County because they're Hennepin County employees. So we'll see where that goes. But the exciting thing is that it's been hugely successful and the challenge is that we don't want to turn people away that are otherwise qualified to participate. The second update is that we made a decision earlier this year, thanks to the support of finance and Jamie in particular, who we talked through with this. We had historically been charging for evidence. Some other jurisdictions do not. And we made a decision in balancing the staff time required to process all of those checks and transition or transfers of money for relatively small amounts to get criminal discovery, that we would stop charging for evidence and be, like many of our counterparts, we also believe that this would promote access to justice and that people would be able to review their their discovery for their criminal justice experience regardless of their ability to pay. So this has been successful. We've been implementing it for about a month now. Well, I guess, wait a minute, 10 days. It feels like a long month. And I haven't heard anything about it, which probably tells me that it's going well. So. Lastly, on Just Deeds, if you recall, during the last budget memo and carryovers, we requested a law clerk. We had a law clerk join us. She's now preparing to take the bar exam in about 10 days. She worked on our Just Deeds city-owned properties and was able to, we all attended the training and learned how to do it. And she put together the paperwork to discharge the city properties, thanks to the assistance of the folks in community development, specifically Glenn and some others down there who worked with us very closely on that. We have one step left for the Torrance Properties and one step left on the abstract properties. And we hope to move those forward as well. So I would say within the next quarter, we should probably have discharged those racially restrictive covenants on city-owned land.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Melissa. And with that, that is an update of our Racial Equity Action Team. So as you can see, within all 10 departments, there are key champions and continue to do the work within practices, policies, and procedures in each of the REITs. And again, our city employees are the best in knowing what those practice policies and procedures are to continue to support the effort to create a more racially equitable and inclusion and belonging space. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and thanks to everybody who presented this evening. It is greatly appreciated. Councilmember Loman, a question?
So before you sit down, I did, yeah, I did have a few questions that I wanted to ask because I do think there are questions that are asked, you know, beyond, you know, here that I wanted to be sure. There's a lot of projects that we saw today, a lot of staff time that's spent on these particular projects. And I know you've sort of stated this, but I want to just ask the question directly. Why is it important that we do these projects? And maybe this is a Faith question, I'm not sure. But I want to at least raise that to give you the opportunity to respond. I have my own response, but I'll let you.
Faith, feel free to join me too. Thank you so much, Councilmember Loman, for asking that question. It's really important to continue to embed racial equity actions within each of the departments. Again, because we know that systemically there are policies, practices, and procedures put in place within municipality and government that also creates barriers and that is not accessible to key marginalized or underrepresented communities. And so by inactivating racial equity action teams within all departments, we're able to then have key lens that are embedded within everyday life that we provide practices and policies that could be more equitable and accessible to our community here, specifically in the City of Bloomington. And again, we lean in on the effort of training and supporting our key staff in that effort because they know the policies, the practice at best. And myself and Faith, we come in to also then provide our racial equity lens to say, well, have you thought of this? Have you considered this? Or here are some tools and resources that you can look into. We often refer back to GARE, the Government-Aligned Race Equity, to talk about the tools and resources that they can provide as well to each of the REITs. And Faith, if you want to.
Thank you for that response with that. Just a couple more questions here. So then I'll go to this one here. There's some folks who ask, you know, and we've asked this many a times and you've answered this many a times. But I think sometimes if you're just picking up on this midway through the process, you may have missed when we originally talked about this. There's always this question, why racial equity as opposed to just simply equity and inclusion?
Yes, thank you again, Councilmember Loman, for that question. Why racial equity specifically is because we know at the forefront that there are also implicit and unimplicit bias that occurs. And by having a key lens on racial equity, we're able to then name the issue and address the issue and come up with the solutions for those issues. And so when we look at different laws created, we know that even example with the Chinese Exclusion Act that was created, it was all based on race. When we looked at redlining, we know that predominantly marginalized and Black African-American communities was at the forefront of being harmed within that redlining through the government policy. And so by having a lens on racial equity, it's really targeting and specifically naming and calling out what are the key issues that were put in place in law that created barriers and also continue to inactivate the, just the systemic barriers that continues to occur within communities that could continue to grow and prosper.
So essentially what we're saying is it's not just racial stuff, but you know, that's where the epics, you know, it starts there and then it kind of emanates out there. So I thank you for clarifying that. So then the final question that I have for you, and let me just set the context for it, is that we, you know, as a council and as, I know as our residents join together, as we put together our strategic plan, you know, we looked at a data book in terms of the demographic shifts and changes that we're having with the city. And in a sense, we're investing in this very important, not only concept, but just a completely different paradigm shift as we look at the world. It makes us, and this question's coming. This is an important, as we make this paradigm shift, there's an important piece of this that's going to prepare our city for the future. As we talk about being a remarkable city that's welcoming to all folks, I love the statement that you guys had, which is a vibrant, safe, and healthy place for all. Love that. There is qualitative and quantitative measures that are done through these things. How do we know that we've succeeded with the, in? How do we know that we've succeeded with the investment that we've made here in all of these activities that we talked about tonight?
I'm gonna jump in on this. Mayor, council, Councilmember Loman, I think that's a really important question about how do we measure the impact of our work? And in fact, spoiler alert, we're going to talk about that on July 24th, when we come back and give sort of the comprehensive overview of the work that we're doing in the organization.
So we can do a cliffhanger, so if you want to come back.
Well, I, I think the cliffhanger would be to tune in on July 24th so that you can go through and sort of like really hear that story, a data field story that talks about sort of what progress are we making in the organization? What changes are we seeing? And then I think to your point about why this work is important and sort of the impact that it has on community, we've talked at length about sort of like the change in demographics and how the workforce is shifting and how racial inequities have cost the state of Minnesota millions and millions of dollars. And so the work that we're doing here in Bloomington is not only important for our community and for our staff, it's important for the sustainability of us as a city. And so we're really excited to not only be doing sort of important work from a more perspective, but work that is really intentional and that has a business inclusive purpose as well. And so we'll be telling more of that story on July 24th. For those of you in the audience and those of you tuning in online, please come back. That's your cliffhanger. The only other thing that I'll add to that is that before, Padala did an amazing job with this presentation. And side note, I know, Jamie, we're over 30 minutes, but I have to throw this in here. I, I hope that you all can see sort of the amazing benefit that came with adding additional work to the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. I, I would not be disappointed if we got a little bit more, but I'm super excited about having two people doing this work and being able to expand our capacity. And Padala is, is great at that work. And she did a great job in responding to that question, Councilmember Loman. The only other thing that I would add is that this work is intercessional. And so we lead with grace because we know that government sort of is a perpetrator and creative race as we know it. And has a role to play in the racial inequities in this community. But the work that we do in our office is intercessional. We have sort of like people working with us in 10 different departments of all races and are inclusive of all faiths and all genders. And so while we have the racial equity action teams, the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging is an intercessional organization and we utilize an intercessional approach to our work. And look forward to more on July 24th.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the questions, Councilmember Loman, and the responses. And thanks to everyone who presented tonight. It is appreciated. It's great to see the great work going on in the city. And, and Faith, I appreciate your, your answer as well as to the value that this brings, not only to our community, but, but beyond. And I really do appreciate that. So thank you very much. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just felt the urge to like maybe state something that I think is really important that, that I heard tonight that we have to keep in mind, especially for those of us that are white up here on council. People of color didn't define themselves as other in this country. We did that to them, and that's why race is important. Because we are the ones that made those rules and we are the ones that need to then help unmake those rules so that they can see themselves as the whole people that they should be seeing themselves from day one. And I think that we forget about that sometimes. So I'm just, that's not an admonishment to anybody up here. Obviously, I think we all agree on this stuff, but I think it's important, important lens for white people to think about this work through. So thanks. Appreciate the point and privilege.
Thank you for the comment. We're going to move on to item three on our agenda, our consent business. And Councilmember DeLisandro, you have our consent business this evening.
I do, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you, sir. I have a hold from Councilmember Loman on 3.1. I have a hold for myself on 3.4 and a hold for Councilmember Nelson on 3.5. I don't think it'll take long to think there are more questions of clarification. But I, if there aren't any more from anybody, I don't see anything else, I can move to adopt 3.2 and 3.3.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt 3.2 through 3.3. Were we not going to do 3.6 or was there a hold on 3.6?
I'm sorry, that's my fault. I didn't even, I, it's too far down and I missed it. My apologies. Let me restate my motion. I move to approve 3.2, 3.3, and 3.6.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to approve 3.2, 3.3, and 3.6 in tonight's consent business. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item 3.1.
Mayor, that was.
Councilmember Loman.
That was mine. So this one is a resolution of a budget adjustment to transfer HRA and port funds to the City Facilities Fund. I know I did talk with the city manager about this at, maybe about six weeks ago. But then I got a call from somebody right before the meeting, so I didn't have the opportunity to mention it to you. But their, their chief concern was about the amount that was being allocated for this. That, that there were some thinking that there was going to be more than the $300,000 that was, was in this amount here. And then the other concern was that whether or not the staff wanted to see this change. And so I don't know if you want to comment on that or even can comment on that. And I, and I, before I even ask these questions, I want to preface this, that I'm nervous about even asking the questions because I don't know that this is the proper role of a council member because I really truly believe there's a policy side of things, which this kind of creeps a little bit into that, into that administrative piece of it. And so really where my question is, is for a office creation, is this a reasonable amount to spend, for one? And then my, my secondary policy question is from a policy perspective, is really around the idea of, you know, you know, in terms of, I don't even know how I can even ask a staffing question. So you decide if you want to respond to that or not. And Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Loman. First, on the item itself, this is, well, let me ask you your first question. Is this a council issue? Anytime we're allocating funds, it is a council issue. The, the funds that we're talking about here were already approved by the HRA and the Port Authority within their budgets for this year. The council just has to approve the transfer of those funds. And it is reflective of the share of the proposed modifications for each of those divisions within community development. So, you know, they have their portions of the office space that will be affected. They're contributing towards the project itself. We don't have the total cost of the project just yet because we're, we're back out there from the initial design that was created last year following significant employee engagement that we need to update the costs because I imagine there's been some escalation in both labor and, and materials. So we will be coming back to council when we have that final cost because it will require allocation of other sources of funds, what, city funds or, or somewhere else. So first question is that you asked about the, the funds. Yes, it's a council action. Second, there's been, there was significant employee engagement last year. When we went through the planning of this process, recognize that not everybody's going to be happy about it as people's working stations are likely to be modified. For some people, it's more, and some people, it's less. And recognize that that change is impactful in a number of ways.
And let me clarify my, my question. And I know you don't have the total amounts now, but in terms of trying to do a redesign, and I understand this is almost an impossible question to answer because depending on where it is and what the building is and all those kinds of things, those all factor in. So my question is, is this a reasonable amount? Because I know taxpayers are paying for this, but you know, you know, does this fit within what is a reasonable amount of money to be spending for a redesign of an office space?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, I think one person's reasonableness is different than another person's. I will tell you that we will get the best pricing that we can because we have to go through the public process for, you know, this in terms of making sure that we, we follow the rules about, you know, getting, getting, yeah, competitive bids on the project. So the price is what the price is, and then it's up to the council to determine if it's an acceptable price. In this circumstance, we have a, a large department and the modifications are changing around the orientation because we've had a fair amount of reorganization within that department over the last couple of years. The previous workstations are original to this building, so they're reaching 20 years of age. They're still in working condition, but we, we have other reasons to move forward with the, with the redesign. And so office furniture is not cheap. I'll just say that. And for those of you who work in office environments, you probably know that.
Questions answered, Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, no, I think unless, unless there isn't anything else.
If there's nothing else, I'd look for action on item 3.1.
Well, then I'll go ahead and move this thing here since I held it up here. I'll move to approve the budget adjustment resolution to accept $135,000 from Housing and Redevelopment Authority and $165,000 from the Port Authority to the City Facilities Fund, the office space needed in community development.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to accept item 3.1 in our consent business. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item 3.4.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that was the one I held and I, I was just hoping that somebody could maybe expound a little bit on what that community engagement discussion was. Because I, number one, I'm grateful for it. I know that the residents, especially the ones explicitly around that property, were, were actively engaged in the process of, of that development. And I'm hopeful that it means that we've come to good resolution in terms of their comfort with things like the lighting there, the noise there, the other stuff like that. So if, if anybody could articulate that, it would be wonderful.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, Chief Seal is not here. I, I believe the extent, Carl, you got it? Okay, good. So I don't think we did broad engagement. I think it was direct engagement because you have two properties that are most directly impacted. As you know, it's in your district, so you're familiar with it. Carl?
Thank you.
Good evening. As the manager indicated, it was not a broad engagement process, but was specific to the adjoining properties. And as that project has developed, there have been lots of discussions with adjoining property owners about how, what kind of modifications might be done. Not to say that there might be other things that the, the adjoining properties are not happy with. This is one piece that they were happy that we were able to accommodate, so we're moving ahead with that.
Yeah. And can you articulate specifically what it is? It doesn't actually tell us. I mean, it sounds like there's an amendment to maybe increase its height or something like that, or?
It was, the original plan was a, as I understand, was a chain link fence along that property line. What's being proposed is an eight-foot-high privacy fence along that side. So it, it blocks some of the view of the, of the fire station, which was perceived to be larger and more intrusive by the adjoining property than they had perceived the plans before it was constructed.
Thank, thank you for that. That's it. I just wanted to make sure we had an understanding. I appreciate the efforts there. I know that this has been a long time coming. Is there an open house planned for that property? You don't have to answer that now. We can take care of it in 5.3.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, when we opened Fire Station Number Three, which was our first new fire station in many, many years, we had hoped to have that type of community event, but we opened in the middle of a pandemic. So we are hopeful that we will have a, a community event that will allow people to see the investment that we're making in modernizing our facilities. So when we have a date set for that, we will let you know.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, then I will move to approve First Amendment to the Services Agreement with Century Fence Company for providing fence services to Fire Station Four to increase the contract amount by $21,311 for a total contract not to exceed amount of 773, sorry, 736.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Loman to accept item 3.4 as stated on tonight's consent business. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. And our final item tonight, item 3.5 on our consent business. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Super quick here. I just wanted to strike the words "front yard" from this resolution based on conversation and information I received from staff that this may end up actually being the side yard once they make their determination that's a corner lot so they can choose which one. But they almost certainly would choose the other street to be the front yard. And so I just want to strike that. I think it's very clear that it's 81st Street and we're modifying that granting that variance. I support the variance, so.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, staff's amenable to that change. If you saw the information provided today, that was recommended by the planning manager as an option to the council if you wish to do that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, please.
With that, I would move that in the case of PL 202364, having been able to make the required findings to adopt a resolution approving a variance to reduce the setback along West 81st Street from 30 feet to 18.9 feet for a new single-family dwelling at 8101 Wentworth Avenue South, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to accept item 3.5 on our consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you, Councilmember DeLisandro. Moving on to item four on our agenda, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And we have one public hearing this evening, item 4.1. It's a public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 17 and Appendix A of the city code related to right-of-way fees. Good evening. Once again, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Scott Anderson with Utilities. And with me is Eric Schoen, our Customer Services Supervisor. So if we get into the weeds deeper than I'm accustomed to, he can hopefully help us out with that. Is there, okay, loading a presentation. Give that just a second. Okay, here we go. So what we're talking about here, a section of city code that addresses fees for work within the right-of-way. And when, when I say work within the right-of-way, we're talking about work typically done by utility companies, gas, electric, telecommunications, others working within the, the city-controlled right-of-way. The, the, these, this section of code, these fees were last updated in 2006. And really what, what kind of precipitated the opportunity for these changes were changes to our internal workflow, as well as, as kind of years of informal feedback from, from utility companies and those, those performing that work. Background, right-of-way fees are intended, intended to provide full staff cost recovery for review, permit review processing, and inspections necessary to complete work to city standards. So in the most basic of terms, we're reviewing plans to make sure they're not going to put you to other util, private utilities through public infrastructure. They're going to, they're going to leave that, that infrastructure in places that allow us to, to expand our infrastructure in the future if needed. And they're going to leave the right-of-way in a condition equal to or better than, than how they found it. And again, as I mentioned, really working on some internal efficiencies to, to help simplify this, this structure a little bit. And then just, kind of just some, some pictorial examples of kind of what this looks like. You know, on the left, we're, you know, we're talking about getting out and, and walking a running line or doing a preliminary site visit to make, make sure what we think is out there is out there. And then, and then doing the inspection of the underground utilities, be that a long running line of buried cable or pipe or, or a terminal point installation of a cabinet or junction box of some kind. And then on the, the restoration side, soft surface restoration, seed, sod erosion control, hard surface pavement, curbing, things of that nature. So this, this slide gives an example of, of some existing right-of-way permit fee examples compared to what, what we're proposing. You can see in the case of Excel and CenterPoint. And I'll talk a little bit in the next couple of slides on, on how this comes, this, this comes to be. But kind of what some existing permit fees would be versus the proposed. What's missing from this slide are, are some areas, and we'll see that in a couple of slides as well. For example, a one-hole excavation under the current fee structure is $208. That will increase to $560. A one fixture installation, you know, be it a pole or, or a cabinet, goes from $175 to $560. But what this does, this addresses a larger share of projects, particularly larger projects, and, and makes those a little more, a little more palatable. This slide provides a look at 2022, just simple forms, total, simple formats, total permits, and then average cost for us to, to process and inspect those permits. Gives you an idea of trying to, to demonstrate that the magnitude of, of where we've landed seems to be consistent to a certain degree. And again, looking at 2022, first part of 2022 and the first part of 2023, again, just total permits. part of twenty twenty-three, again, just total permits and average cost to date. So, option one, for, for lack of better description, this is our current, our current rate structure. Somewhat complicated, difficult for applicants to, to understand and often led to surprises when, when, hey, here's your permit fee, it's fifteen thousand dollars. And, um, trying to figure out, trying to understand how that came to be and, and kind of walking through that with them. Um, and the, the biggest issue with this structure is that just, it didn't scale well to larger projects. So, um, a telecommunications project, for example, looking to extend services to a larger neighborhood, um, those, those fees would, would, could become quite large, um, well in excess of, of the actual effort and, and labor needed on the part of the city to actually perform, form that work and potentially became a hindrance to the expansion of those services. Um, option two, what, what's being proposed is a flat fee of five hundred and sixty dollars, and this is based on a five-year average of total permits, um, and, and, and our cost to do that. Um, so a fairly simple, um, calculation. I know we, we took a question earlier from Councilmember Loman on, on looking at some of the, the intricacies of, of the components of, of what goes into each permit under the old structure. We, we don't, we don't necessarily have, you know, all that in order to tell you that, you know, um, we spend X amount of dollars on just whole excavation permits versus running line permits. The, the flat fee will, will expedite permit review. It, it doesn't penalize, it may, you know, potentially encourage, um, larger, more complex projects. However, um, we've been, you know, the communication we've had with utility companies, you know, their drivers are their customers, their levels of service. The, the permit fee really has, has only come up, you know, really as, as an obstacle for those larger projects, um, um, when, when, when they reach a certain size. And then, as I mentioned, you know, this is intended to remove any barriers for expansion of those, of those services. Uh, residential utility permit fee was looked at also. Current fee is two hundred and eight dollars, and this would be if a homeowner needs to do a sewer dig or, or something out in the street, and, and that fee, uh, would be reduced to a hundred and fifty dollars. Internal review included, um, the, the rapid racial equity, uh, impact analysis and discussion uh, with, with Faith and her team. It was, uh, you know, another challenging REIA in terms of, um, data. Um, what, what do we, you know, we're talking about issuing permits to utility companies. Um, how does that, you know, how do those, how does that directly relate to and impact our, our residents? Little bit hard to dig into, um, but what, what stood out to us the most was, um, the removal of a potential barrier for expansion of services that, that the public, uh, generally be looking to, to utilize. And then just the, the overall lowering of that fee for, for all residential customers um, as, as a benefit. Had discussions, uh, with finance for budgetary implications. And again, the, the existing fee as well as the proposed fee are, are both fully intended for, uh, that full cost recovery for staff time and, and equipment and of course, legal review. So with that, our, our recommendation would be for council to adopt, uh, the resolution as outlined, amending, uh, Chapter Seventeen, Appendix A, uh, fee schedule associated with right-of-way, uh, permits. I can take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Uh, looking for questions here, council. So the one that I was puzzling through as I read this and then to hear your presentation, the understanding that there has to be that nexus between the cost of what it takes to put the fee together or to put the, to do the, to do the permit basically, and then the fee amount that can be charged. So, I'm, I'm puzzled how we can go to an average and this could survive a legal challenge one way or another. Wouldn't somebody be able to say, well, you don't have that direct nexus between the work that went into it and the fee that you're being charged right now?
Mayor, um, po- potentially, um, although I think, I think that flat fee, um, goes a longer way toward, um, not allowing that argument versus the existing fee. I think we, we, we were potentially running into that under the existing structure for those larger projects. Um, we've seen, uh, the potential for permit fees in the, you know, the eighteen thousand dollar range, uh, for a project. And, you know, we were not going, you know, that was based on that existing structure and, and we just simply were not likely to, to expend those amount of resources, um, to complete that work. So I think the, the flat fee where, you know, the, there's, I think, you know, a, an apparent benefit to those larger projects potentially, um, at the, at the cost of some of those smaller, um, installations. However, um, you know, if you're, you're talking about, you know, an existing two hundred dollar installation, you know, for a cabinet, you know, a single cabinet installation, for example, current fee is two hundred and eight dollars, going to five hundred and sixty dollars. I don't know that that difference is, is measurable. I mean, certainly it's measurable, it's, it's doubled. But I think in the scale of, of the construction and what those costs are, I, I don't think that that change in that permit fee is, is significant to, to raise that issue.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, Scott, in, in the course of developing the recommendation, we also consulted with the utilities who are the primary permit payers, correct? And the, their feedback in response to this proposal was?
Was, was positive. Um, I think, um, I, I don't, we, we didn't have anybody express a concern with regard to the flat fee as being problematic. I think, um, most of them looking forward to, you know, mo-, um, you know, that, the simplicity of, of navigating the flat fee sca-, uh, schedule or structure versus, uh, what we have in place, as well as the prospect of getting away from those exceptionally large fees for their larger projects. Because a lot of them seem to have some larger renewal, just like every utility. We, we talk about asset renewal, they've got the same things coming and, and, and so I think this is appealing to them in that matter. The other thing I'd like to point out too is, you know, obviously we would, you know, we'll be reviewing this on an annual basis to make sure we're hitting the mark, continuing to take comments and information from utility companies and, and if there's, if something isn't adding up, um, or working out as we think, you know, we'll, we'll be back, um, looking for a revision.
And I, I guess I can't say I'm shocked to hear that companies that would, might see their fees go from eighteen thousand to five hundred dollars might be in favor of it and not see a problem with that.
That's a, you know, a unique one, but.
Mm-hmm. I, I understand. Um, and, and then I would guess I, I would direct to you, but maybe even to, uh, Mr. Verbrugge also, will, would, would this then kind of pave the way to us looking at all fees like this? Uh, flat fee, uh, schedules for, for everything that we charge fees for in the city of Bloomington?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, uh, we haven't had that specific discussion at a staff level across all fees. Um, we have discussed, uh, the, you know, the, the possibility of having a more vigorous fee study than, uh, than we have had recently. You know, we've not done one of those in quite a while. And, uh, I think we do, um, well, not I think, we do, uh, informal surveys of our pure cities to see where their fees are across a number of areas to make sure that, um, we're either not falling behind or not getting out of step with anybody, and I think that we're keeping track. Uh, the process of doing a much more comprehensive fee study is, um, is, is pretty intensive, so, uh, we, we should probably do it at some point in the future. I don't think it's critical that we do it now. Yeah.
Councilmember Dalisandro and then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Dalisandro.
Thank you. This is a related question, maybe, and so tell me if it's off topic and I'll defer to another time. But one of the things I've heard a lot about with our u-, with, um, some of the work that's gone down, down in my neighborhoods is that people have been really unhappy with the maintenance, the, the, the post, what, I forget what you called it in your presentation, I apologize. Like the post-work work, where it's things like re-sodding and, and all of that kind of stuff. And I know that I've mentioned more than once, somebody, I've, I've forwarded on, you know, complaints and things like that to the maintenance staff. Is, is there, is, is, I guess, is this related to that in the sense that those, the fees as part of this include that, number one, right? And number two, what is the remedy for, uh, or should there be a remedy? Or should there be additional charges? Should there be a need for a remedy, um, as it relates to this kind of work? And so that, like I said, that could be another topic for another day, and I appreciate that. But it's relevant to this because most of the time it seems to be, um, you know, Excel or CenterPoint or somebody else that does this utility work that ends up causing the particular problem for the customer.
Mayor, Councilmember Dalisandro, it is, is definitely part of this and, and restoration is, is a part of that inspection process. Um, it, it does become challenging, weather, uh, drought thing, you know, make things like seed and sod, um, not as successful, um, as it can be. But we work with the utility companies and their contractors to, um, and the residents to try and, and reach resolution and, and get to that, um, as, as best we can through the, through the course of construction and that permitting process. As, as far as, as what type of recourse we have, I mean, we have future permit issuances and things of that nature. Um, they, utility companies are, are, their contractors are bonded, um, but typically that's, that's more toward, you know, getting to damage and, and things. Um, so it's, it's been traditionally a, a back and forth with the utility and their contractors to, to get that restoration where it needs to be. A lot of times, unfortunately, um, it, it takes longer than, than property owners would like it to, um, but it's definitely, definitely part of it and something we're working on constantly.
Yeah, if I'm, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I, just to clarify, you know, I'm, I'm wondering in my own head if there's like, hey, if this is a, if this is a right-of-way permit that includes the destruction, and I'm using that's my term, not anybody else's term, the destruction of somebody's, you know, well manicured, right, front lawn, yard, whatever you want to call it, um, is there a reason to add more fee because you know you're going to have to go back in year two, for example, and re-sod because it's not all going to take? Or, you know, those kinds of things? That was more or less what I was thinking about. You know, there are, there are definitely projects where you know that you're going to have resident impact to their personal property, which is different than like being in the middle of the road. And I'm just wondering if we have a chance to potentially provide a, a mechanism here that provides a, a more well-rounded remedy? That's my thought. Thanks.
Councilmember Dalisandro, I just responded, I mean, I think that's something we could look at and consider. One clarification, it may be a distinction without a difference. All this work is occurring within the right-of-way, so it's, it's not technically private property. I know how, it's my front yard and, and I, we totally understand that. But just wanted to make, make that clarification. But it's something, I mean, we can certainly, you know, continue to consider, um, you know, based on, on our, you know, our success in twenty twenty-three and, and keep an eye on that.
It, it's very fair that you say that. Um, I'll, I'll restate the question. We as homeowners have to maintain the right-of-way even though we don't get to own it, so it'd be nice if we got a little help. Let's put it that way.
Fair, totally fair.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to Councilmember, uh, Dalisandro's, uh, point, I was talking to a, a former, uh, councilmember today and, you know, uh, we had the conversation about, about time, uh, you know, that timing piece in there and that the way that it's written, that it, it's kind of, and I understand why we kind of done that because there may be weather or other things you just mentioned earlier that may be a part of that. But I, I do too wish we could look at that as well, um, and, and do something with that to kind of shorten up that time, time period. I don't know how we do it. It's much easier to, to say it, but when, when you get ready to do it, you sometimes can create other kind of things. But just so you know, there's another councilmember's interested in that. But, um, uh, I appreciate, Mayor, what you, uh, had brought forward, uh, in terms of that challenge piece. And I, you know, I'd certainly asked a number of questions, but I just wanted to just be sure that I'm clear because, um, I know there's, and maybe it's a legend, um, among it, but I know that, uh, there was a presentation at one point in time where, uh, my understanding is Public Works came forward and we have a building and it's a certain size, and now we found out that we've outgrown that size. And so my, my concern is, uh, when I look at these fees, um, as a piece of it, and I know that, and I certainly trust our finance department, uh, to look at, you know, what's required there. And you mentioned that the full cost recovery, um, what was the statement? And, and I just, as I look at those, the, the previous fees and then the current fees, I just am concerned. I know we can go back at this each year, so I don't want to, you know, dig down deep into the details of it all and try to do math up here, um, you know, on camera. I certainly do not want to do that. But I just want to just be sure that I, I, my understanding is that the way that this is structured and set up is that we're going to, um, at the end of the year, uh, the, you know, the minuses will equal the pluses and we'll have a balanced, uh, 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 budget coming out at the end. That's my main concern, uh, as we make this change.
Sure, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, uh, as much as physically possible, looking back, you know, due to permit, um, you know, number of permits, type of work, type of things that happen on these sites, you know, we, we get plans for a permit, um, we, you know, determine what that, that fee should be, and then you, you go out and for whatever reason, the work is dramatically different and more time is spent or less time is spent. And so over, you know, the course of, you know, the, during the, you know, the five-year look back, we've been over some years, we've been under some years. And so, um, but, but to your point, yes, the, the intent is to make sure that we hit, hit that number and, and hit that bullseye as, as best we can, understanding that construction is variable and, and a lot of things impact that. We have certain fixed costs, um, that, that will always be a part of it. And so, um, you know, we'll, we'll be monitoring that and, and if, if adjustments are needed, we'll be working on that in, in due time.
I, I just appreciate that statement and I just want to, I, I get nervous, you know, when we get the, the amount there and then we have a larger project and, and somehow the cost is over that because then basically what we're doing is we're subsidizing that from other taxpayers, you know, uh, to do that. So, um, I hope that, that doesn't happen. And, uh, um, and then certainly I trust that we'll bring it back and, and look at that if that's the case. So, um, I, I, I can, I can support it with that, but I'm skeptical, um, uh, of this change. But, you know, I'm gonna, I mean, everybody has looked at this and, and has, has put it forward, so, um, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Muo. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've just got one question. Um, is there a significant difference in the amount of time staff spends based on the size and scale of a project? I mean, all projects have a similar number of things. You got to intake the thing, you got to review it, you got to approve it, you got to maybe have questions and you have back and forth with the applicant, um, and you got to inspect it, you got to finalize it. There's, there's those series of steps. And part of the reason I ask this is, you know, I don't pull permits of this type, but I pull other permits. And the reality is, is the difference between a large remodel and a medium-sized remodel, small remodel is probably fifteen minutes on site. They all have the same inspections, you know, and, and all of that. And I, I'm just trying to get my head around because that's, that's the world I know. Is this similar to that or is there a vastly different amount of time between the projects?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I'd say it depends. Um, there, there will be instances where you're right, there, you know, depending on the type of work being done, if it's, you know, a, a li-, a half mile of directional boring, you're, I mean, you're looking at a, you know, a couple of excavate, you know, every so often, there's a hole to look at, um, not too diss- dissimilar to, to a single installation or, or something of that nature. You, if a utility company has a particularly poor contractor, um, there's a lot more returning and back and forth, uh, for that, you know, even if that's a small job than, than on some larger jobs. So it really depends. Um, I think, um, your observation can be accurate and right on. And, and in other cases, you know, a larger, the, the, the CenterPoint Energy Beltline project that came through here a number of years ago, that was a large project that required a lot of time. No way to compare that to, to, to anything, but, um, it, it depends. I hope that's okay.
Thank you.
Something, something to add on that before we get to Councilmember Muo, please.
Maybe I could put it in a perspective, if you don't mind. How many, how many, how many permit charges did you look at to come up with your average? Was that thousands or was that like hundreds or do you know?
I think, you know, we have, I think there were nine hundred and some, nine hundred and eleven permits in twenty twenty-two, so I think roughly, you know, eight or nine hundred, eight or nine hundred permits per year. We looked at that, that five-year window.
And that one or, that one you described as an example of being like a true outlier, that would represent how many of the nine hundred?
Boy, very small percentage.
Okay, great. I don't know if that's helpful, but I thought maybe put it in a, thank you. Pardon Gs for the interruption.
Councilmember Muo.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I agree with the concerns that my fellow, um, councilmembers have. And the other thing I am concerned about too is if we go to a flat fee structure, does that encourage only large, uh, projects? And then does that discourage small projects in certain areas of the, the community that then continue to be underserved because it is more profitable or it is just less expensive to do large projects instead? So that's something I am concerned about as well. So that's something I am concerned about as well.
Councilmember Muo, so I don't know that the size of the project necessarily. Well, I don't think the permit fee structure on its own will encourage or discourage these projects. Small projects, as I mentioned, while for a single installation, that permit fee, yes, will double, it's still a very small component of the overall cost of that project. If you're installing a cabinet or a pole, the work that goes into that, you know, whether that fee is $208 or $560, it's a pretty small component. So I don't see that as getting in the way. I also don't see it as, and this is based predominantly on feedback and conversations we've had with utility companies over the years with regard to this fee, this fee structure and these fees and their planned work. Their work, like I mentioned earlier, is planned out years in advance to either upgrade existing infrastructure, expand services. And so I don't see that, but it's something, you know, we'll try to monitor and keep an eye on as best we can and continue to take feedback from utility companies on what they're thinking and what they're looking to do in the future.
Well, I will say I appreciate the comments by the council here and I appreciate hearing some of the concerns brought forward and I like the back and forth and the explanations and so on. I can support this for the variety of reasons that you've put forward. I will say I've got some, I'm concerned just a bit because again, nobody whose fee coming down from thousands to 560, they're not going to complain. But if we get enough people with the $200 to a $560, I mean, then they could actually say, well, there is no connection between the cost of this fee and you just pulled that number out of an average. So if I'm thinking of that, others have it as well. I mean, I'm not breaking any new ground here, right? So that's my concern. I understand they're used in other communities and used successfully and have stood up. If it can be, if it can help us to expedite things and if it can help to simplify things, I think it probably makes this worthwhile and I can work past some of the concerns that I do have. And it's an opportunity, I think, to continue, as we keep talking about, to be a bit more business-friendly here in Bloomington and try and make this a bit easier organization and operation to work with on a day-to-day basis. So for those reasons, I think I could support this and see where this leads us. Council, are there any other questions or comments, concerns on this? Anyone like to move a motion forward on this? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. We talked so long on it, I forgot there was a public hearing.
That was the hearing.
That was the hearing, I guess, yes. That was the motion to open the public hearing and I will do just that. Thank you, Councilmember Delisandro. Item 4.1 this evening is a public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 17 and Appendix A of the City Code relating to the right-of-way fees. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on this issue tonight? Mr. Sable, is there anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, no one on the phone.
Last call for anyone in the chambers? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Brian Savig. I'm mayor and members of the council. Couple of questions. I'm a little disturbed. The last time this was changed was 2006, if I heard that right. I'm surprised that, well, let me continue. So, and city manager mentioned that informal surveys are done. Yet this seems to be kind of a sweeping change, so I have some of the same considerations. I don't have a lot of irons in the fire on this one. It just seems odd that it hasn't been changed since 2006. The large-scale ones are changing dramatically. I suppose you could say the small-scale ones are changing dramatically as well, they're going up. But, you know, that's, for an increase from 2006, two and a half times isn't that huge. But I'm just curious, why wouldn't this be something that, okay, if we're doing surveys of other cities, what has that shown? I mean, has it been in line for 15 years and then suddenly it's out of line this dramatically? Or, you know, I'm just a little surprised that the way we do like look at garbage rates and I realize that's for every single residence in the city, but whereas permits are only if you're changing something. But it just seems that's an awfully long time and a sudden large change. And so I'm surprised and why it isn't on some sort of basis like that. And secondly, in terms, so in other words, if it's been so far off, it would seem to me that either we haven't done any big projects because if we had, there'd be huge profits at the ends of those years. If we'd done a huge project in that, in a given year, you'd expect if we're changing the rates that dramatically, you'd have huge profits. That would send up a red flag. So again, my concern is just we're changing it significantly and we haven't looked at it in a long time and yet there haven't been any signals that should be looked at. So I guess those are my questions and those are the things I'm, I guess, you know, even as a citizen, I'd like to know that, you know, is that why a lot of areas don't have fiber optic cable? Is because we, you know, it was way too expensive to do that project? And so we nixed it, or we didn't, but the companies that had put it in nixed it. So anyway, that's my point.
Appreciate your comments, Mr. Savig. Thank you. And I do think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, but when you were talking about the comparisons to other cities, we do that with a variety of fees, whether it's greens fees, hourly rates at the ice garden, the different work that we do, we work to keep in step and so we're not out of line with the fees charged by other cities. I took that, when you made that comment, you were talking fees in general specifically to this type of fee. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor and councilmember, that's correct. I was speaking about fees across our entire enterprise. The fact is, the question about why, why does it seem to be so long since we've evaluated this? The fact is that conditions don't change dramatically from year to year when it comes to this kind of service that we provide. Our costs are generally increasing at a pretty predictable rate. Our fees are adjusted most times annually that tries to keep up with essentially the cost of inflation. So there isn't really a reason that the fees or the cost to provide the service associated with that fee would become untethered from one another, like I said, because there just isn't that much of a change. But over 15, 20 years, there's enough of a change that it warrants taking a look at it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Anderson, quickly.
Mayor, just thought I'd respond with regard to the reference to the change in 2006. That's in reference to the structure. The fees have obviously been adjusted over time to keep up with costs and things of that nature.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the chambers wish to speak? Council, seeing no one coming forward, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Delisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Council, I want to apologize. My statements that I made earlier should have been made at this point and I apologize for being out of order on that. I do not like that when, during a public hearing when statements are made one way or another. That's inappropriate. I honestly lost track of where we were and that this was indeed a public hearing. So I apologize for being out of order in that way. It was not a good look and I apologize for that. So, council, additional questions or comments? Now that we are in the official conversation point of item 4.1, Councilmember Delisandro.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. No worries. I think it's been a long day. I think that last week was a day, a week off for a lot of people and I think coming back today, it's just been a rough re-entry, if you will. So I won't hold it against you if you don't hold it against me. I did have one just kind of regular comment. I think as Councilmember Muo mentioned, you know, whenever we, whenever we can, I think making sure we are able to identify and provide the most well-formed fee for service that we can at the tiering that might be the most equitable, I think, is always a good thing for us to try. You know, if we're at a point right now where it does, you know, yield challenges to our smaller projects and then we don't have our bigger projects with the same burden, then there is an imbalance that we need to look at. So I don't know if we have a plan for how we're going to monitor this. You know, maybe to even the resident comment, you know, maybe we don't let it go 15 years before we make a structural change to the way that things are being done, you know, if we can get that. And so I don't know if anybody can articulate for me the plan for that. But I'd love to make sure that this comes back in a year or whatever so that we're all able to assess, you know, the 900 that were polled. What did they look like? What were their demographics? How big were the projects? You know, did we actually make money on these polls or didn't we based on, you know, the size of the projects? That kind of thing. So I don't know if we can get that information, but if we could, that would be great.
I think we can make that request to staff, that we can revisit this about this time next year or maybe at the end of next year, maybe get 18 months under our belt and take a look at exactly what they are. I think that makes good sense.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman.
Mayor, I think you articulated, while it may have been at a different point in time. But, I mean, but I think what you stated was well-stated and I agree with that, that take on it. There's only one other thing I want to add. A number of councilmembers, I know our finance director attended the Ellers Conference and I'm always reminded when we get to these times where we talk about these comparisons of other cities, just a reminder that we ought to be careful about those comparisons when we're doing that. You know, sometimes it's we're comparing apples and oranges and that type of thing. We just want to be sure that we are looking at our city fees separately. I just think that's a good rule of thumb as we look at these fees and what is appropriate for our residents as we get ready to move forward on this, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually just have one quick question. This doesn't have any budget implications for next year's budget. If I understand it correctly, the fees will be about in line, the costs will be about in line what they would have been anyways.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, that's what we expect.
Okay. And so, and then to Councilmember Delisandro's point, at a minimum, if this doesn't work, it'll be a part of the budget discussion next year, absolutely for certain. So, but I just want to make sure that this, we're not making a budget decision tonight and it didn't seem like we were. So, thank you.
You're good. Council, if there is no more question or discussion on this, Councilmember Lohman. Be happy to move this if you'd like, if that's what you're, I'm thinking you're getting ready to move that way. Member, you're exactly right. All right, Mayor, I'd be happy to move a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 17 and Appendix A administrative relief and fee schedule of City Code relating to right-of-way definitions of fees. Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Delisandro to approve an ordinance for amending Chapter 17 and Appendix A regarding right-of-way definitions and fees. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Lohman. Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of the ordinance that I just stated. Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Delisandro for summary publication on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much and be interested to see how this works out. It's, and again, I take heart in the fact that it is done. We aren't plowing new ground here. It is done elsewhere as well. But be interested to see how this all works out and especially for the folks who will benefit from this in the city. Thank you. We are going to move on to item five of our agenda, our organizational business this evening. First organizational business piece that we're going to talk about is item 5.1. It's a resolution initiating rezoning of Lyndale Avenue properties from B2 to B4. Mr. Ramler Olson from our planning agency is here. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council. Share my screen. I have a presentation prepared. All right, perfect. Yeah, this is a study item examining a proposal to rezone a total of 28 parcels near Lyndale Avenue. Sorry, I got to move something really quickly. Near Lyndale Avenue intersections with 86th Street and West 98th Street from B2 to B4, as you said. And part of this is a consideration of a resolution to initiate those proposed rezonings. I've included a couple of notes under that bullet point. They're pretty important. This resolution does not obligate the city to rezone the parcels under consideration. So shouldn't feel any pressure to do that. It just starts the public hearing process to consider the proposed rezonings. So I think it's necessary to point that out. And those parcels under consideration are on this slide. They're split up by the intersections with 86th Street and 98th Street and Lyndale Avenue. They're reflective of the parcels that were within the node areas of the Lyndale Avenue suburban retrofit plan. If you recall from, that was adopted in April of 2021. Some guiding principles from that plan were to create a critical mass of housing and that's what this proposal will allow to happen because of moving from B2 to B4 will actually allow housing within those parcels that are currently zoned B2. It also, yeah, so B4 will support that mixed-use character and the walkable urban design that's envisioned in the suburban, or within the retrofit plan. Let's refer to it as that. So the other initiatives that the city is engaged in that also support this rezoning effort are the 98th Street Station Area Plan and COM Plan. Both of them see mixed uses and again, a critical mass of housing along Lyndale Avenue. There were already eight parcels rezoned after the 98th Street Station, or in furtherance of the 98th Street Station Area Plan. That occurred in 2019, I believe. And those eight parcels are viewed in that image on the right. There's three land uses to be considered within the area under consideration, general business, community, commercial, public. That public land use is within the study area or the area under consideration. If you look in the image of the right, in the southwest corner, there's a lot that's guided public, that's currently a park-and-ride lot, but it's owned and operated by Metro Transit and they've considered those parcels, including the two to the north for mixed-use development. So if this, if they do consider redeveloping along those lines, the city may want to consider actually regiding that parcel from public to something more appropriate for mixed-use, or, yeah, for the mixed-use development. This is the current zoning of the parcels under consideration. Again, they are B2, so it's no shock there from these images. But it shows you the surrounding zonings at both intersections, something to consider. It's more industrial near 86th and Lyndale, but recently there were a string of properties, you'll see it on the 86th Street node image, that were rezoned to transitional industrial. Feature of that new zoning district is that it also allows residential development. So again, kind of in line with that earlier initiative. So right now it's general commercial or B2. Something distinct about this zoning district is that it does allow auto-oriented uses and rezoning to B4 is something that would change that character by creating a neighborhood scale, a commercial residential area with mixed uses, more amenable to walkable urban design. That's again, within the retrofit plan. You'll see some of the goals from that zoning district at the bottom, but I think that's also summarized in the staff report. Here's a table comparing the standards from B2 to B4. I've just highlighted a few that really do put a pin on the distinction. There's a higher FAR with residential in B4. So again, making build taller, build more dense. The parking placement is not allowed in the front, so it's not allowed to front between the building and the road. So it's allowed on the side or rear window requirements along the street. So again, contributing to that walkable environment. And it actually has a maximum front yard setback and has a minimum 10 foot. So again, bringing the building closer to the sidewalk and in furtherance. So again, bringing the building closer to the sidewalk and in furtherance of a more walkable environment. Something that's always a consideration when you're rezoning is the conformity status of the parcels under consideration. Some lots would be become nonconforming due to characteristics, lot characteristics. Sorry. Due to use, lot characteristics and or building design. Nonconformity created on a lot when it does not meet the standards of the underlying zoning. So that's when it's created is when it's been approved. But there is a distinction. There are legal nonconformities, and they've received all the required approvals. They can continue through the various means as stated in that bullet point. And that status runs with the land, so it doesn't, it's not attached to the body, the property owner. It runs with the land. So if the property were to be rezoned and it was a legal nonconforming land, a piece of property, it would continue as such after the rezoning. So they could continue that use in the manner as it was when that rezoning occurred. This is a visual display of the lots that are currently conforming in those by use, which have a conforming uses or nonconforming uses. So there's four properties near 86th and Lyndale, and there's one within the area of 98th and Lyndale. Staff has done some engagement with the property owners, owners of the properties under consideration. We've set up a Let's Talk Bloomington page to just house materials to be repository and also to take feedback and engage with residents through that, through that venue. In early May, we sent out letters to owners informing of informing them that we were kicking off this project on mail. And then that we were also preparing them that we were going to visit the properties to talk to property owners if they were present on May 11th, which we did. We visited each property on that day. May 23rd, we held a virtual open house. Sad to say, not too many people attended. That's, that was kind of a bummer. But nonetheless, we held another in person, open house and in person one on May 24th, the following day. Only three people attended. Nonetheless, we were advertising these. That was part of the mailers that we sent out. So it, for for whatever reason, it just wasn't well attended. But nonetheless, we did receive some emails from folks that own property within the areas of under consideration, but there was no explicit support or opposition. It was just questions about the project generally. So answered those promptly. We held a study session at Planning Commission meeting on June 22nd. We received some general support for considering the rezonings, for considering, not necessarily a stamp of approval on the rezonings. But we also received some questions related to nonconformity, the lower response rate from owners of properties under consideration. We were asked about what are the plans for Lyndale and, you know, the restructuring or rebuilding of Lyndale and how that relates to these rezoning projects that we've been carrying out for the in service of the retrofit plan. Staff, we noted that there was a strong interest in a corridor study from Planning Commission members, and staff agrees with that. We, we have a working group that meets regularly to discuss the retrofit plan and to check in on the progress and to see what our next steps are. And there's also, you know, it's worth considering that there is a considerable presence of brownfields within the area, so that would also be part of the corridor study. So it won't be just limited to right of way. Maybe we would also consider those brownfield areas off of the right of way. Next steps, if if all goes well and a resolution to initiate the rezoning is adopted, we would schedule a public hearing for the Public Planning Commission on August 17th, a public hearing with City Council on September 11th. And if you are comfortable with adopting the resolution, there's recommended language on this slide for you to consider. And with that, I can take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ramler Olson. Why don't you back up the the one to the to the resolution? Because the point that the point that I was going to make was that this is not, in fact, as you stated, this is not the final be all and end all on this project. This is simply initiating the rezoning. And you're a couple of slides back, the Planning Commission would look at this. We'd have a public hearing here in front of the City Council. I'm sure there would be a lot more engagement, hopefully more robustly attended. But with, there's going to be, this is not the be all and end all. This is just a, the first step in moving this forward as we consider all of this.
Correct, Mayor. Really, this is to get your feedback on the proposal. Is there something that staff should consider? Is there anything that we should change our approach? We really want that feedback, but also to consider the resolution for a good.
Thank you. Counsel, questions, feedback. Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, I have, it's probably a question others up here know the answer to. I just want to make sure that I understand. The intent of this, in part, as you mentioned, was to make sure that we could accommodate some residential where we can't today, correct? It says in the definition here of what a residential is, is that there, there's this accessory notion and that there's this, I'm getting, minimum nonresidential point, 0.1 FAR required. I don't know what that means. And so can you do, like, is that for like every 10,000 square feet? There needs to be 1,000 square feet of residential or something like that? Like, what, can you translate that for me? Oh, look at you, you can. Great.
Mayor, councilmember Delisandro, is this what you were referring to, these these standards?
I was looking in the council packet. And so in the council packet, it was, maybe it was a little bit more generic. I was, there's a table in here that basically says Table 2 Comparison of Uses. And under residential, it says in the B2 general commercial, no. And in the B4 neighborhood commercial, it says accessory. And then in parentheses, it says minimum nonresidential of 0.1 FAR required onsite and prints. And I just didn't understand what that definition meant.
Oh, Mayor, councilmember, I believe that just means that there has to be, it can't just be purely residential. There has to be a nonresidential component to it.
Does that 0.1 mean something like 1%, 10% or something? Or is it just, like, how do you, how do you all calculate what qualifies as, yep, it's right for B4?
Councilmember, so as an FAR standard, so 0.01 of FAR, I mean, I guess it would just fall within that definition of calculating FAR floor, floor area ratio of the the total floor area of the nonresidential compared to the lot size. And so that just has to equal 0.01 minimum in order to have that, to satisfy the mixed use.
Right, okay, that's fair. Yeah, so so if I have 10, if I have 1,000 square feet, at least 100 feet of that or 10% or 0.1 of that floor area ratio needs to be residential or needs to be commercial. Give or take, I mean, trying to use really easy. Sorry.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you, councilmember. I believe that's the case.
I have that right?
I, I need Glenn's.
Yeah, sure, sure. The ratio we're looking for is 10% or greater, is I guess what I'm asking.
Mr. Mark, again.
Mayor Bussey, councilmember Delisandro, that's exactly correct.
Okay.
100,000 square foot lot, a minimum of 10,000 square feet would need to be nonresidential. You can have pure residential, but you'd have to do that under another zoning district. So Lyndale Flats is an example of that on Lyndale.
Nonresidential, does that, does that include amenities that are provided for the residents that are not considered homes, like, like, you know, gyms or pools or something like that?
Mayor Bussey, councilmember Delisandro, we have not counted that as nonresidential. That's customarily incidental to residential. So we would count your, like, rental office and gym and, you know, swimming pool if there was one, we would count that as residential.
Okay, so the the term accessory in this definition doesn't imply that it's those accessory, you know, amenities, if you will, that would count towards it. In addition to all of that, 10% or more, 0.1 or more of floor area ratio needs to be set aside for some commercial use.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thanks, appreciate it.
Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start off by just saying how much I appreciate that we're taking steps to move forward on this. You know, I look at the idea of renewal, and I'm definitely a supporter of that as we look at what we're trying to do in our city. I look, you know, to our north, Richfield and Edina, and I just see all of those things being done, and I get envious sometimes. And it's great to see now we're doing it. And so I think the only question I really have, you know, as I, as I look at this, and as we kind of look forward, we've got the B2 and we've got the B4. And I know we've done some shifting and changing with what that B4 has meant, and it's been around for a little while. But I sort of wonder, as we, as we look at this area, is B4 really what we want? And does that really keep with the the vision of what we're trying to accomplish there in that, in that area? And that's kind of the question I have, you know, you know, is there, is there some other zoning district that we ought not use for this? Should we, you know, develop a new one? I know we did that in the South Loop to try to make sure that we are crafting and creating exactly what we want there. And just, just for example, you know, we look at the FAR piece here. I, I wonder, you know, is that really what we want to do with, with, you know, with respect to this, that area as you're walking down Lyndale? And I'm not really looking for an answer, you know, for that. But I think I just want to open that up as we, as we're looking to craft this, you know, we're crafting this for a generation. You know, certainly I saw what it was like when I walked up and down Lyndale myself. But I just want to just, I know we have that vision there, you know. Is this really what we want to do with that? And that's kind of the question I kind of have. Is that the right zoning district? Are we restricting ourselves because it's, you know, what we've got now? Or is there something else that would, would, would create that, that wow factor as you walk down Lyndale? And is this, is this B4? Is that really it? So, but I'll leave it at that. So.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick items here. So want to support being proactive about this to councilmember Loman's point. Is there at all any possibility that the recommendation, when we actually finally consider it, would come back as something other than B4? As you go through the whole study process and find something that maybe is a better fit and or changes to standards in B4 that would be maybe a better fit here, something like, is that, is that a possibility? Or are we locking ourselves into only looking at B4 as it's defined today?
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, councilmember Nelson, the way the resolution is worded, it would lock in the B4 district as at least coming forward to public hearing. In response to councilmember Loman's comment, we do think B4 is really well suited in this case. We're not hesitant at all of creating new districts, and we've been actually criticized for creating too many districts. But in this case, we think B4 is a pretty good match for that Lyndale retrofit vision insofar as it allows the residential uses, allows a much higher intensity than the B2 district, and then requires the buildings to be close to the street, parking to the side and rear. And then the use mix is a little bit different, specifically not allowing auto repair, not allowing gas stations as part of the B4 district. So we do think B4 is a good fit in this case.
Second item, thank you, Mayor. So I understand the idea about being proactive about this because, you know, we could wait until somebody brings forth a proposal and rezone it based on that. But they could also bring a proposal that was B2 and not what we're looking for exactly. So I understand the rationale for the proactive part of it. My question is, what happens between now and potential rezoning? Could somebody bring forth a major expansion, rebuild, or something that is compliant with B2? And would we have flexibility to say, hey, we've already initiated this process? That's not the direction that we're saying that we want to go with this area? Would we have discretion, I guess, as a council?
Mayor, councilmember Nelson, if someone were to propose something that was in line with the current zoning district without the rezoning having been approved, we would have to evaluate that proposal under the current standards, so the current zoning. So if they were able to get all approvals before the rezoning was approved to B4, then that's, that that development would be compliant. If then it were to be rezoned to B4, it would be legally nonconforming at that point, in which case there would be, they would be allowed to continue in the same manner. But there would be some restrictions on expansion and other, other factors related to their, you know, how they're using their property. But if, yeah, they were to do something, if they received all the approvals before the rezoning was approved, then that would be, that would be in line with the code.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of questions and comments. So you mentioned a corridor study, and I totally agree with you. I feel like when we think about the vision of the Lyndale Avenue retrofit initiative and what was laid out in the plan, I mean, I feel like it's a critical piece. And without that, I don't feel like we'll ever kind of get the feel that we want in that, in that, that area. I also am excited to see this in front of us tonight. When I went back and looked at the study when I was reviewing the packet, I mean, one of the primary recommendations was proactively rezoning to help facilitate the vision for the corridor. And so, again, really excited to see this, this here today. I do have a question kind of related to the Lyndale Avenue retrofit study itself and the recommendations laid out, because we don't really talk about it much. We don't really kind of get updates on the progress that's being made on all of the recommendations that were laid out. And I feel like this is one critical piece of kind of a, almost like a bigger work plan that could be in place. And so I'm just curious, I know you said that there is a work group that is meeting and talking about these things, but are there other things that are going to be coming in front of the council? Or are there things that we should be considering moving forward with to help support staff in, you know, moving this vision forward?
Mayor, councilmember Carter, the, this rezoning is, the last rezoning is recommended in the retrofit plan, so we should celebrate that. And then it moves into looking at the specifics of the corridor. That's where the corridor study becomes operative, is getting a little bit more detailed. There's a lot of visuals and a lot of expressions of the character along the, along Lyndale Avenue within the retrofit plan. And so the course nor study would just further define, further define those, those specifics that would enable that, that transformation to that, that vision. So that, that would probably be something that would come before council just to get feedback and to have to start that discussion. But there's nothing in plan for this year. I will defer to the planning manager on the work plan for next year. So maybe I'll just leave him.
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, councilmember Carter, that's correct. We don't have the corridor plan on this year's work plan. We need to work closely with public works on that. But 2024 is definitely a possibility that we can discuss.
Thank you, I appreciate that, especially specific to the corridor. But like, when I look at the plan, there are things like retail strategy, right? So organizing business meetings, creating a strategic business plan for the corridor, evaluating potential for a special service district. I mean, there's like all kinds of ideas in here, or recommendations. And I guess I, and I know that it goes beyond planning, I'm guessing. And so maybe it's a question for the city manager, just in terms of, you know, as we think about the long-term plan to execute on this, on the study. I mean, how, how are we, how is that planning happening? Like, who is making sure that those conversations are happening and that we're tracking toward? Or maybe we're going to make decisions that we don't want to do some of these things. But yes, what does that look like? And maybe that's a conversation for another day, but.
I think it's a good input, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Carter, into how we are moving forward. Our planning activity is hand in glove or needs to be hand in glove with the work that the HRA and the Port Authority are doing. And so the Port Authority team is actually working on an RFP that'll be going out. I think you probably are aware of that, that is going to be looking at some help in terms of framing our strategic planning moving forward. And now that the port is expanding beyond the South Loop area. So the process of attracting investment and developers and, and interest in redevelopment is going to build on the work that the, the planning team. is going to build on the work that the planning team and the council has already done to prepare this. So as you said, this is a long-term plan, and it's going to require the collaboration of multiple units here to move it forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize. I know that I'm always iterative about my questions, but that's because the other council members bring things up that trigger things for me, so I appreciate your patience. Kind of dovetailing into Councilmember Carter's thoughts there. You know, one of the things when I was looking at the zone, generally speaking, and thinking about the retrofit plan was, you know, we definitely heard from residents about things like the Boulevard itself, the road and traffic management around that. We heard about, you know, having places of public gathering and social opportunities. And, you know, in our zoning, we don't generally set aside, as far as I can tell, requirements around that. What I mean, for example, is I've been in certain cities where, as part of a development process or anything, you know, 10% of the available land use needs to be set aside. I think we do that for landscaping, but like some people do it for public art or other things like that. I'm just, as we think about that, you know, does there need to be more added to the zone? Or can that be done in these opportunity zones? We've talked about the kind of our overlays on the basic zoning framework. So I don't know the right answer to that, but I would like to get a point of view on that to say, the zone is like layer, so comprehensive plan, then zone, and then we do other things on top of that? Or do we have to go down into the zone itself in order to make some of those accommodations? I don't know the answer, but I thought maybe I'd throw that out there as if there does need to be some flexibility in the definitions around B4 to accommodate that as opposed to doing it in some layer higher related to the Lindale retrofit plan, for example.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember DeLisandro, I like the way you described that as kind of layers of activity. You can think of the zoning district as setting the table. And then subsequent to that, as a development proposal comes in, we might have a park as part of that property that shows up on our Lindale retrofit plan as an aspiration when that development comes in. At that time, we may look for dedication of that park, or in this case, a small parklet. So that's one example. Another example is when the port, HRA are working with developers, talking about public assistance. They have a high level of influence over the design of the end product. That's another point at which a lot of those ideas are layered on, on top of the zoning.
I guess that would be true for sustainability requirements as well, then? If we wanted to layer in those, and I'm making, you know, I'm making things up, not to be, but if we said, you know, because of where it's located, it needs to be certain types of materials, or it needs, I mean, do those things fall into that category as well as opposed to add the zoning layer, if you will?
Yeah. Mayor Bussey, Councilmember DeLisandro, that's correct. Right now, under Minnesota state law, cities are very constrained in what they can do in terms of requiring sustainability, but when there's public money involved, then that changes the whole discussion.
All right, one last question. As I look at this slide that you have here, as you, down near the bottom, the rear and the side setbacks, you've got, there's a certain setback or different setbacks for buildings over four stories, which brings to mind the question, is there a height limit in the B4 district?
Yes, Mayor Bussey, our height limits are independent of our zoning districts. In Bloomington, we have a height limits map, which varies by geographically, but it doesn't match up one-to-one with zoning districts. So thinking about Lindale Avenue, 98th and Lindale, and that surrounding area is a much higher height limit than as you move north. But generally, it's four stories further north. I believe it's eight stories in the 98th and Lindale area. And then through various zoning provisions, you can get height bonuses on top of that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Well, council, this was, as we said, this was basically to initiate the rezoning. And if, I think we've asked a number of questions, I think, to kind of give staff the idea of, if we did go forward with this, things we would like to see, or perhaps considerations we'd like to work forward as we worked through this conversation. But with that in mind, additional conversation, or if nothing else, I'd look for action on item 5.1.
I'm happy to make that motion.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Ready? Yeah, okay, great. So I'll move to adopt a resolution initiating rezoning of the parcels included in the project study area per the recommendations of the Lindale Avenue suburban retrofit plan.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to adopt this resolution initiating rezoning of the parcels included in the project study area per the recommendations of the Lindale Avenue suburban retrofit plan. No further council discussion on this? Hearing on all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen. You're off and running. Very good.
Thank you.
As mentioned earlier, as we adopted our agenda this evening, item 5.2 has been withdrawn, so we will not be addressing item 5.2. That'll take us right into item 5.3, our council policy and issue update. And I will kick us off summarizing our city council listening session that we held at 5:45. Actually, we only had one speaker this evening. And the speaker brought up a good question regarding the keeping of chickens and other possible winged fowl in the backyard, and questions initially about the size and the regulations of enclosures and so on, which I think staff is going to take a look at. And then the possibility of adding other poultry, such as ducks and pigeons, to our definition of what can be kept in the backyard. And I think the consensus of the council was, this is, we want to answer the questions, the specific questions she had regarding enclosures, but then the possibility of having that discussion of additional poultry, ducks and pigeons, and possibly more, depending on how far we want to take this conversation. So that was our council listening session today. And I will note once again, it was a resident who we have not met before. So once again, our council listening session gave us an opportunity to meet someone else and somebody new in the community and to talk about something brand new, our web foot friends. So that was our council listening session. Mr. Verbrugge, do you have anything to add this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I do have one item that we are looking for an individual or individuals who would be interested in serving on the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. We're going to have an action for the council on the 24th agenda, if we can find someone or several who would be willing to step forward to serve in that capacity, and then making a recommendation in Hennepin County on the appointment of that person for the Bloomington seat, as it were. So I will send to you all a map of the area. And if you have constituents that you're familiar with, who either have an interest in watershed district policy or activities, or a background in hydrology or other sort of environmental science, those are the exact kind of candidates that we're looking for. So I'll share that with you all tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council, anything to add this evening? Councilmember DeLisandro, Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Muah, Councilmember DeLisandro.
I think I get the benefit of being in your direct line of sight when you ask that question. So if somebody else would like to go first, that's completely fine. Okay. I had three items, hopefully they don't take long. One of the things I noted today, when we talked about Bloomington Forward, is that we are speaking to the potential, you know, Bloomington resident versus non-Bloomington resident split in our revenues. We've downgraded that from the 75% we talked about a couple of years ago to 60% now. Has the Minnesota Extension provided that updated documentation in support of that? And if so, would you mind getting it for us? I think that'd be great. I've been interested in that, knowing that we had kind of pre-pandemic numbers, and now we probably have some numbers, hopefully, that include impacts of the pandemic on things like sales tax that we'll pay because we're having Amazon ship stuff to our house, for example, or other things of that nature. So just wanted to ask that question.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, we had expected to be able to have that information by now. What we've learned is that the Department of Revenue, which produces the sales tax data, is strained, and so they have yet to provide the information. That usually comes out about this time of year, usually a little bit earlier. And it's only when that information is available that the University of Minnesota Extension Service can then analyze the data. And so we're waiting for revenue to get the sales tax data pulled together, and we're in contact with the Extension Service, so they know that they'll be ready to go, but it'll take them a couple of weeks to run that data. We hope to have that as soon as possible. And just to recap what Councilmember DeLisandro is speaking about, the sales tax that is generated in Bloomington, according to the 2019 Extension Service Analysis of Department of Revenue data, was that somewhere between 70 and 75% of sales taxes paid by non-Bloomington residents. In 2020, because of the pandemic, or 2021, I think our most recent data was, that that number dropped to 60%. And I think that our understanding of that is largely related to the fact that hospitality was largely shut down during the pandemic. So all the outside spending on hotels and restaurants and other things that generate sales tax was not occurring. And so I can't say what that number's going to be. I can't expect a certain number. I have a feeling it will be closer to what we saw pre-pandemic than what we saw during the pandemic. And as soon as we have that available, we will add it to the Bloomington Forward page so people understand it. And then we'll be able to provide a comparison about, you know, what happens if you fund these projects in one manner, and what happens if you fund them in another manner that is mostly dependent on Bloomington taxpayers. So that information will be available.
Wonderful, thank you. The second thing I wanted to mention was just in relation to kind of the Lindale retrofit, I've gotten two complaints recently about lighting from our good friends in storage facilities. I know we grandfathered them, we made some positive changes to our lighting code not that long ago, and we grandfathered these storage facilities into that, you know, as a result of that. I don't know if we can think about that differently, but I worry as we continue to add, for example, if we add more residential on the Lindale Avenue retrofit, right? Now it's not just the patrons of Luna de Luna that have to look at this ridiculously lit-up storage facility with nothing going on at 10 o'clock at night. Now it's a bunch of residential units as well, potentially. So I don't know how to do that, but I think it's important. It's on Penn Avenue as well as Lindale Avenue, we have these challenges. And so I'm not 100% sure if we can do something there, but if we could, that would be great. And so I'd love to just have some conversation about that as it relates to all the other work that we're doing. And then lastly, one of the things I thought about was, as we talk about our strategic communications, I've noticed that we don't get as much, potentially as much interaction on let's talk Bloomington as we might could. And that's not probably well-formed grammar, but you knew what I meant. And I'm wondering if it's because we don't leave those things up long enough, and so that when, by the time that people see them in the briefing or whatever, then they're closed, and then they're like, ah, I didn't get to that for two weeks, but now it's gone. I say that because, you know, as we think about the chicken question, that's a great example of like something you could put up there and have a longer-term study, right? Where people are giving us comments on it because it's something we might consider. I don't know if that's part of our strategic communications plan, but I wanted to throw that out there. And then that's it for me.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick items here. Is there any update on 35W southbound closure? It was my understanding that was supposed to happen this weekend and did not, so was it rescheduled? Or was, it did?
It was closed.
Oh, it was just north of me. All right, because I got to work, so. And I was surprised, I thought it was going 169.
I did not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry for bringing it up then.
It was the weekend closure, wasn't it?
It was the weekend closure, but it wasn't all the way down to 35, which is what I was expecting.
That's right.
Okay, so they must just be doing that in phases as they go. Okay. Okay. And then I just want to follow up on one thing that the mayor had brought up earlier about looking at all the fees and structures, and I had brought up somewhat tangentially about building an inspection. And just one note, although I completely agree with the thoughts of the mayor, I think that we may be preempted by state law in that area that requires it to be value-based, permits to be based on valuation of the project. So we would, if that was something of interest, I think we would have to work with our state partners on changing legislation there, is my understanding, so.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember.
It's not the only fee, it's just bringing that one up, that there is state law there.
Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a lot of conversations regarding building a community where people are welcome and where they want to be, and that's really caused me to really notice small details around town. And so tonight, I'd like to get some support from council, specifically around covered bus stations on Civic Plaza property. Because when I look at that, the message it's sending is that we welcome you if you have business here, if you drive a car, or we welcome you if you have a bike. But if you have to take public transit, we're not going to shelter you when you come here. And we live in Minnesota where it rains and it snows and it sleet. And so having covered bus stations, bus stops on Civic Plaza, would send that message that we welcome you no matter how you get here, and we're going to cover you and shelter you for the business that you need. And so I would like to find support to be able to do that and put that on our property so that we can send that message that Bloomington is the welcoming place, or you can be, and that you're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I would agree with you. It makes logical sense, yeah, if you want to welcome people, give them a place they can get out of the elements. I would have to ask anyone who might know, I know shelters are a Metro Transit thing, and I know they take input. And if I, you know, if I wanted to do air quotes with my fingers, I would. They take input on that kind of thing, but not, it's not a guarantee if you request a covered shelter that you're going to get a covered shelter. Is it, Mr. Keel?
You're absolutely correct that, generally speaking, the majority of transit stops are owned and managed by Metro Transit, and they only have covered stations at very, very high-use locations. So I think we are well, well below the threshold of actual traffic that they would actually invest in a covered station. That's not to say that the city couldn't build it themselves. Frankly, most of the covered bus stations in the metro area are not owned by Metro Transit, it is adjoining properties that have built those on their own. So we could certainly investigate, maybe get some data on how many people are using these transit stops, maybe some very rough estimates about what the cost might be or the range of costs associated with these things, and share that with the council. We could certainly do that.
I don't know, I'd give that a thumbs up, at least to learn more information on this. I think it certainly couldn't hurt. Got enough nodding heads?
The only thing I would add is I'm pessimistic about the data we would have. We don't have the offering now, so that could be detrimental to the data that we would get from Metro Transit on who actually uses it. But if we build it, you know, will they come? We'll know.
Good question as well. Thank you. Council, anything else tonight? Seeing nothing else, our agenda is complete. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn this evening. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries six zero. Thank you all for the discussion this evening. Thanks to staff for your work. Thanks to everybody who participated or tuned in this evening. Have a great rest of your week, everybody.